Yep, it opened, so I'm there.
Good afternoon to everyone. Welcome to the Safety Climate Committee meeting, which is, uh, which starts at four and we will begin the process and we'll go through the, the agenda. First, we'll do the roll call. Um, Jamila Smith Folds.
Present.
And myself, present. All right. Um, and then we go to the approval of the agenda. Back from, uh, February the first, uh, twenty twenty-one. So in anything, any changes or anything we need to highlight?
Trustee Christian, we're approving the minutes or we're approving the agenda for today?
Oh, we've proven the gender and then we go to the minutes. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We have the agenda.
I don't have any changes, so I move the agenda for approval.
Okay, and so move, um, and that's a yes?
Yes.
All right. Now we'll go to the prove of the minutes from February the first. Anything, uh, to highlight or is all good to approve?
I'm able to move the approval of the agenda, uh, of the minutes for February the first twenty twenty-one.
All right, so, uh, that's a yes?
That's yes.
All right. Now, we go into the, um, public comment. Are there any public comment?
There are hands raised and they're coming up fast. I'm not sure Veronica, if you have the clock available. There, if not, I will, um, kind of say time at the one and a half minutes. So we have four hands. I'm going to go ahead and go to the first hand right off because we have a lot on today's agenda. We do have the clock. All right. So the first hand is Joseph Gladser. You may unmute, sir.
Thanks. This is a big difference from the regular board meetings where you're waiting five, six hours. So it's really nice. Okay, so Joseph Gladser, history teacher, Hercules Middle. What could be a more, more important priority for us at school is in making sure students have better access to their teachers and counselors is a safety issue. Let's hire more counselors and teachers so we can reduce counselor caseloads and teacher class sizes, teacher class sizes. So counselors and teachers are better able to support their students. The counselor caseload is way too high. Currently, the ratio for secondary is six hundred and fifty to one and contractually that could go up to even eight hundred and forty to one before another counselor would need to be hired. We are the only district I know of with no elementary counselors at all. At Pinot Valley High School, a counselor was cut last year even though they opened a new building and added more students. That is ridiculous. As a classroom teacher, I have classes that are between thirty-three and thirty-nine students. That is also ridiculous. Let's prioritize the students. There's nothing more important. Think about what you want for your children or your nieces, nephews, grandkids. Would you want them in a class of thirty-nine? Do you want them to have to fight with eight hundred and thirty-nine other students to be able to see their counselor? This is an investment in our district's financial future because we will keep students from going to charters or private schools if we lower the class size and counselor caseload. So not only can we afford to do this, we can't afford not to. Let's get this done this year. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will remind everyone, if you're speaking on the counselor issue, there will actually be public comment as well when we get to that agenda item tonight. Just as an FYI, our next public speaker is Kenneth Jones. You may unmute.
I am on the, uh, speaking about the counselors. Um, I'm a counselor at Korematsu. I taught English. I was a middle school counselors. I was a high school English teacher. I think we need to rehire the laid off counselors. And I think the American School Counselor Association supports counselors who are uniquely trained in child and adolescent development, learning strategy, self-management, and social skills to focus on positively impacting student achievement and social emotional learning. School counselors should be involved as mediators, student and parent advocates, initiators of positive ways to guide students toward maximizing the opportunities of the school experience. The middle school counselor should assist students in solving academic and scheduling problems and work with teachers in supporting classroom management and interpreting and supporting students' academic progress. Being visible allows students to know the counselor and not to be hesitant to approach the counselor with the concern, but more often just to have a working relationship developed with all students. Counselors must be seen and I'm going to end by we shouldn't be disciplinarians. We should be counselors, guidance consultants, working for the social betterment of the student.
Thank you. Our next public speaker, Marissa Glidden. You may unmute.
Hi, trustees. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Marissa Glidden. I'm a third grade teacher on full-time release to serve as president of United Teachers of Richmond. I am here today to share my support and appreciation for our incredible school counselors. Our school counselors are crucial to our student success, but unfortunately, they are extremely overworked with enormous caseloads. As we begin to reopen our school buildings, we have to remember we don't want to return to normal. Normal was not working for so many of our students even before the pandemic began. The first step to returning to something even better would be to be hiring our counselors at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, so that they can best serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Maggie Whitaker. You may unmute.
Hi, I'm Maggie Whitaker. I'm a parent at Harding Elementary School to a fourth grader and a kindergartner and a grateful parent to a student with an IEP. My kids wouldn't thrive without the work being done by the school district. Because of that, I want to speak and advocate for school counselors across the district. I really hope that clock did not get reset. We should be having a two hundred and fifty student to one therapist caseload. We should be having psychologists at a seven hundred to one caseload and a seven hundred and fifty to one ratio for nerds if we want to have the best possible outcomes moving forward in the next school year. If social emotional well-being and student mental health is a priority, we need to prioritize the staffing and the support of school counselors at all school sites, not just middle and high school, but we should have them at elementary school. It is not enough to have psychiatrists and therapists at large and not at every single school site, especially at the elementary level as well as the middle and high school level. We have a great district, but if we're going to do the hard work, we need to have the support and it can't be one more thing that falls on teachers' heads. Thank you so much. Thank you, school counselors. Thank you, school psychologists and nurses. You are the backbone of our future goodwill and the ability to be able to have great student mental health outcomes. And that's all I got.
And that will complete our public comment. Trustee Christian.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, and now we proceed, oh, to discuss discussion items. Um, and we'll go, we'll start off with the safety plan. Do you do that, Dr. Wall, or?
Yeah, so this is just a quick, um, reminder. The safety plans were originally in a presentation by Mr. Booker brought forward. We are following the lead of trustee Smith Folds and her committee that created a tool to allow for a quicker review of those. And so we provided that tool so that everyone knows what we're using. Um, each of us on the committee will divide up the schools again to go through, review them. We'll then be bringing them to the board, the full board for acceptance at the twenty-eighth. But it's really just to let the public know that there is a tool to review those pieces. There's no other discussion tonight for that item other than presenting the tool publicly. And thank you for the great idea from the academic subcommittee there. And we have our work to do between now and the twenty-eighth when they come to their full board.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. And we'll be ready for the twenty-eighth to give back the information. And now we go to item B.
Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Do you want to see if there's any public comment on that item?
Okay, um, do we have any public comment?
I am looking for hands and I am seeing none. So comments over, discussion, and then moving on.
All right. So now we go to the discussion. Uh, B, CSO update training for reopening and you give that.
So this one here, we have with us Charles Johnson, our supervisor of our CSOs. And hopefully, because I didn't have access to your doc, you'll be able to share your screen, Charles. There if, and, and unmute. He's going to do a presentation on where we are at with training and support for CSOs, not only as we're looking for reopening, but just the whole focus that we've had for the last year and a half plus on that. If not, we will quickly see if Veronica can't take over and get that put up. So Charles, if you can unmute.
Hello, everyone. And I'll see if I can, you want me to go ahead and try to?
Yeah, if you can share, that'd be great. And if you can't, then we'll try to get Veronica to do it.
How's that?
There we go.
Okay. Okay. Hello, every, everyone. My name is Charles Johnson and I'm the West Palm County School District Campus Safety Officer Supervisor. Have the pleasure of working with the hardest working safety team in the Bay Area. And as you can see in the picture, CSOs are extremely, extremely proud of their important work as safety officers.
And I'm promoting, as we're speaking, I'm promoting several of our CSOs that are going to be part of this presentation. So you'll see some more folks coming in in a little bit.
This present, uh, this presentation will cover campus safety officers, current location, CFO, CFO's current work assignments, and CFO lead, what they do, training updates, and safety. In normal school setting, CSOs would support teachers, students, and other staff members throughout the day. However, since the COVID pandemic, CSOs have been working as essential faculty workers protecting our food sites from vandalism, unwanted gatherings, and supporting COVID guidelines such as social distancing and wearing face masks when visiting our campuses. On Thursdays, they support food services at all the secondary, well, at all the food distribution sites around the district. They support the food staff. They also support traffic control. And again, social distancing while the community picks up the food boxes. They cover athletic events. Mid-year, so far, we haven't had CSOs uncovered, so we've been increasing our CSO coverage as needed. And we'll be doing it in the future. CSOs are supporting COVID vaccinations events at different food sites often. Every secondary, every secondary school site has one CSO lead at their site. The lead CSO would be responsible for monitoring the overall coverage at their sites. They communicate with their principals regularly regarding the coverage and other safety-related needs. The CSO two also facilitates weekly safety meetings with the principals or the designated vice principal in charge. This ensures everyone is on the same page in regards to safety on the campus. The CFO lead also prepares CSO coverage schedules and break times for the other CSOs, CSO ones, while monitoring the overall site coverage. All right. So in these pictures, you can see our CSO working hard to maintain COVID guidelines at sporting events, checking for face masks, signing of visitors to football games. This slide, you see a list of mandated trainings for CSOs, which the majority of CSOs have already completed. Most of these trainings are made it mandated for all employees. However, there are some that are specific to our safety team, such as such as a CSO-specific training, um, the school safety SB sixteen twenty-six, radio etiquette, de-escalation techniques, EPI non-violent crisis intervention, school intruders, crime prevention through physical security, COVID early screening. And we did continue to increase our training with our CSO that we go along equipment. So as of now, we're, uh, every CSO now has, and we're proud of this because we didn't have it before. We were having trouble with trains and keeping up our communication type with CSOs. But as, as of now, every CSO has access to a laptop or phone book that access trainings and better communication. We also have walkie-talkies that have been updated. We have orders in for earpieces and flashlights for evening events to better assist the community with being able to get to their cars in the evenings and things like that. And earpieces are very essential also. I know people don't understand that, but you know, schools can be very loud and CSOs cannot hear what's going on around, or what's going on. So I have in the earpieces, they're able to communicate within loud areas, loud and things and so forth like that. And this completes the presentation. I'm open for questions at this time.
So trustees, this will be the question portion.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions?
I have some, trustee Christian.
Okay.
So how does one become a CSO?
Um, you have to go on edjoin and, and apply online when you join. And at that time, they'll be in communication with HR department and go back and forth until the process is set.
Is there a physical test or anything like, you know, when you're a farmer or like you're supposed to be a farmer and they make you lift some stuff and see if you can do it? Like, is there some kind of test like that that goes along with being a CSO?
There's not a physical test that's, that's applied to that. However, there are some. Currently, you have to have a guard card and CPR, first aid. You have to have those cards before you can enter into the, or before you can apply.
And there are some physical expectations. You have to be able to be ambulatory, move, move around that are part of the criteria, but there is not a physical that is required to go through immediately.
And there's not an age limit, right? Is it like eighteen and above?
Yeah, you definitely can't be a student still.
Let's say graduated and above, like an adult, an adult, adult. Okay. Um, at elementary schools, who would act in the CSO place? Like who, there are certain things that CSOs do. At elementary school, who does those jobs? Traffic control, fight, break, break, you know, traffic control, breaking up fights, removing students for a room. Who does that at the elementary school?
At elementary schools, they have what's called a yard supervisor who take care of those particular duties.
But, but they wouldn't, the yard supervisor isn't expected to be breaking up a fight or doing any of those things. You don't have that same level at the elementaries. That's usually the principal or designee that takes that role. When it goes to more severe discipline at the elementary, yard supervisors are in place for the general supervision support when kids are out and not with their classroom teachers. So it's a slightly different expectation because you don't have the same manifestations of behavior.
Okay. I've seen some fights at elementary school, but okay.
There are some, but.
Would you, would you think that, would you think that CSO should be on elementary school sites? Would that be something that you would think would be where we should look to in the future?
Um, I think we can be instrumental in in dealing, uh, doing maybe some peer mediation type of techniques at the elementaries, but that's something that we'll have to talk about.
And the only reason I say that is because developing relationships with our students, starting at the very beginning, is only going to benefit in the end. So if we have, if students see CSOs as not punitive, but as someone they can talk to, as someone that they can go to as another person in their life that's going to be foundational for them, starting at elementary school, I think we can curb a lot of things that may happen in middle school and in high school. How many female CSOs do you have?
Um, right offhand, we have quite a few female CSOs, actually. I don't have an exact number in front of me, but just right offhand, say more than, we have about eight, just right offhand.
Okay. And can you tell me some of the benefits of having a female CSO? And do you think we need one at every site?
Definitely a female CSO can be beneficial on the sites. We have situations where females in the restrooms, a lot of cases can happen in there and they can go run right in and deal with the situation. Whereas a male CSO would have to call for now an assistance of maybe a staff member in the office or female staff member to take care of that situation.
And then looking forward towards the fall and beyond, but starting with the fall and beyond, what's your dream number of extra CSOs we need to hire?
My dream number? Oh. Um, uh, well, um, a dream number for me, I guess, would be maybe uh, overall, I would like to see maybe about, we had a number of six people time vehicles that would give us a little, maybe an extra one different sites for coverage. Yeah.
And so for context, for those there, what Charles is saying is probably adding about an additional ten percent to our current
Exactly.
staffing is kind of where he's alluding while he's trying to get the CBO and me a heart attack with the questions, um.
Absolutely.
Wait, I, so I'll answer it from the CBO side. We definitely want to continue to look at what are the needs and the connections so the kids do feel safe from kindergarten all the way to twelfth grade and that we have an environment that's inviting for our students. So the dream number is what is going to move us in that direction because we're going to have a similar conversation on the back end of today's meeting about a different connection for kids. And so our dream is to make sure that school is a place that kids want to be and families want their kid to be without a set number of folks. So the CBO and me had to come back in.
Okay, I have two more questions, trustee Christian. Um, the next question, does every school use the same walkie-talkie code or are they specific to each site? And let me explain, when I was teaching at Hercules High School, they would say a code and then we knew what it was. Like if they, if that, is that the same code at every site? Like, yo, there's a fight or does each site have their own list of codes that they use?
No, uh, universal codes is what we've gone to. Some sites that feel in their old ways, but they're being pulled over to the same universe's code for the site.
Okay, am I very last, sorry?
No, I'm just saying, yes, we're going to a universal code sites. Some are just kind of hold on to it, but we're pulling them, pulling them in. So it's happening.
Okay. And my very last question, you were showing what your, uh, CSOs have with them, the walkie-talkie, the flashlight. Now that we're in COVID, does that include a pair of gloves that they keep on, a mask that they keep on, an extra mask, portable sanitizer, et cetera? Do they get to keep those things on them now?
Um, absolutely. They can put those on them. And that's part of our equipment that we're still putting together to have that on their person so that they'll have, you have to get those things immediately when needed. So yes, you're right on, that's the right track. You're definitely on board with.
Okay. And those, thank you. Those are all my questions, trustee Christian.
All right, no problem. Thank you, trustee Smith Folds. Um, um, I, I guess I have too. Trustee Smith Folds usually have a little bit more to me. Um, you know, just going back to the, to the, to the mask, um, wearing, um, you know, far as the CSOs. And the question, are you looking at a different kind of mask? You know, based on, you know, situations happen where those masks would not fall off, uh, their face, you know, in a situation. So have you guys looked into that?
Um, I have been looking into that, but so far those particular masks have proven to be a little less problem I'm running into is that they're, by being around the neck and by, you know, being tighter and hotter. So they're causing, I think they're causing more problems right now, the ones that I found currently. So yeah, I'm still looking into it though. To prevent, you know, like you said, when dealing with situations that they fall off and situations like that. So yes, I'm still looking into.
Okay. And then, um, um, far as, ah, man, it slipped my mind. Well, actually, the trainees, how often are the trainees are done so that, you know, you know, that, you know, throughout the school year, how are they done?
So throughout the school year, uh, every Friday, CSOs are, they're, they're getting new trainings. Uh, see they're by live facilitator on Zoom or we have the keying, they'll be on keying. Keying system so that they can go and remotely do it online through there. And through there, they can get certificates and, and any number of different types of training. So we're, we're keeping that constant and continually searching for more training to make it more professional, um, safety team.
Okay. Um, and I believe that, that, that'll be it. And I, I just want to say, I, I like that. You know, when you open it up, I saw my picture on there.
My apologies.
It's all good.
I'm only throwing the best out there, so.
No, that's good. You can keep it. You keep it there. You keep it there. Um, but that's, but that's, um, yeah, that, that's it. Uh, you have anything else, trustee Smith Folds?
So we have public comment before we go to board comments.
Okay.
And we do have one. Now we have two hands that are up. So I'm going to go to the first one, Veronica. Oh, now we have only one hand up. And then I'm also going to ask if we can swap, um, the next two items, reverse them just based on timing. So after this, if we can do, um, school readiness is our next item. Okay. And while we're doing that, let me unmute our first of two public speakers, Joseph Gladser.
Hi, thank you. So thank you, everybody, for being here for this discussion and this presentation. Again, Joseph Gladser, seventh grade history teacher at Hercules Middle. Our CSOs do such an important job in de-escalating conflicts, building relationships with students, mentoring and keeping everyone safe and supporting teachers with various issues. They're often one of the most diverse workforce groups on our campuses, which is helpful for laying new students. I can speak from personal experience that the CSOs I work with at Pinot Middle, such as Mr. Tim, Mr. Cheats, and Ms. Joyce, were amazing and deserve to get paid a lot more for how hard they work, often taking on some administrative duties in terms of the responsibilities they deal with. I have never worked with you, trustee Christian, but I'm quite sure you played a similar, similar positive role on your campus. We need to hire more CSOs so we can support students more effectively. We need to hire more CSOs so we can support students more effectively. We should use part of the money saved from cutting SROs to fund more CSOs. CSOs are not the only solution in dealing with campus climate and behavior issues, but they're definitely part of that solution, along with all the work admin and educators are doing to build relationships with students and sticking with boundaries and best practices. Again, just like with hiring more counselors and teachers, hiring more CSOs is an investment in our district's positive financial future. Because especially with SROs gone, we need to make sure parents feel their students are safe on campus. They do a lot more than break up fights. They also build relationship with students and keep them feeling emotionally safe. They also give incredible support to educators, including when we're having a tough day. They offer that emotional support that we sometimes need. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Adam Brown.
Hello, my name is Adam Brown. I am a counselor at, uh, Pinole Valley High School. I have also worked at another site, which was Crispie, uh, Middle School. I think CSOs are very essential to the, uh, to the, to making sure that the campus runs effectively and safely. Um, the fact that we have so few CSOs is actually a detriment because we don't have as good of coverage, not only to make sure that our students, um, are safe on campus, but to keep outsiders from coming on campus as well. I've, um, I think that each site actually needs at least, at least two more CSOs uh, for it to be, uh, actually effective. Uh, I think that there should be actually several, uh, at least two female CSOs at each site too as, as well, because they are detriment, they are fundamental in making sure that, that everything runs smoothly and they have, and with all of the CSOs that I've worked with, they have been very effective with de-escalating conflicts, doing mediations and things of that nature. So, and a lot of students come to them with their problems so that things don't get out of hand. So they are their, our first line of defense and we need more of them. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment. Right? And now we go to the comments. Um, trustee Smith Foles?
I just think that we have to make this a high priority. Our CSOs are imperative to our campuses. They, they are, you know, like we said, it's the first line of defense, but they also build trust. They build trust among our teachers, our staff, our students, our parents. They're just the trust builders. They are the ones that everyone sees. They are the ones that are walking around. They are the ones that are putting, putting themselves out there frontline every single day. So whatever we can do as a district to ensure that our CSOs are valued and that we are putting them as valuable resources on every campus, and I'm including elementary because if you want to see a fight, go to an elementary school with a bunch of girls. They will show you a fight. So I just want to make sure that we are doing the best. I mean, if we're going back, let's go back better. And one way of going back better is to concentrate on those things that are not just academic, but those things that are culture building and CSOs are climate and culture building for our campuses. That's it, trustee Chris. Oh, and I also want to make sure, let me just say, I want to make sure that our CSOs are protected. So when we do go back, there needs to be a, some type of liabilities, some type of form, something to where the CS know, the CSOs know exactly what they are and are not supposed to do. Let me explain. If there's a fight and two high school kids don't have a mask on, I want our CSOs to know if you go into that fight or you don't go into that fight. They need to be clear protocols and procedures for our CSOs because that's a way of protecting them and protecting the students and giving accountability to the parents. So they can talk to little Jimmy and say, listen, you start popping off and you get into a little fight with Bobby, the mask come off. CSO Smith may not jump in there. So just clarity, we need to be clear and we need to make sure that our CSOs understand their responsibility and accountability, that our students understand what's going to happen, our teachers understand what's going to happen and our staff understands what's going to happen. It's a new world that we're coming back to. So we need to make sure that we are clear with our expectations because our CSOs deserve to be protected and not thrown under the bus when this becomes a hot mess. That's it. Thank you, trustee.
Thank you, trustee Smith Foles. And um, I just want to echo the same thing along with trustee Smith Foles and even, you know, as um, the CSOs play a real vital part in every aspect on every school site. Um, and every CSO really put their heart, their hearts into what they're doing. And um, and, and I'm a former uh, CSO, um, and, and I know I put my heart in at, uh, El Sarita where I built strong relationships along with my coworkers that I worked along with. So, so the CSOs play a major part in every aspect, every fa- fabric of, of our school uh, community. And so, uh, so, so we definitely have to make sure that the CSOs have the, the, the resources and all the things they need in order to function, function well um, on the school side. And then I just want to go back to the especially like elementary schools that have, um, K through eighth, um, because the dynamics have really changed. And I just want to say is that we do need a CSO at those school sites. Um, um, because the dynamics has changed. You got seventh, seventh and eighth. So now you, you got kids that are a little older. So you definitely do need, uh, you know, a CSO there. So I like to see those CSOs going to those schools. And then eventually, you know, if we do get them at the other elementary schools. But I just want to see the seventh and eighth, uh, elementary schools, you know, get in there soon as possible. Um, so that's pretty much, um, on that.
So, thank you. We would like to move item D up ahead of item C. Just one of our panelists for item C is finishing up another meeting and then I'll be right back. So if we could, and this is not a full presentation on every single question that there is for reopening, but we wanted to give a brief update on some of the work that's happening behind the scenes with, um, Dr. Shin and Mr. Franco and all of the operations. So there wasn't a formal PowerPoint or anything for today because again, a lot of this is going to be coming out later in the week as we define each school's model. There, the things in writing, but I'm going to let them sort of present what we've been doing for our summer vacation.
Actually, Dr. World, there is a formal presentation.
Oh, there is now.
May I please have a shit, have shared screen rights?
Right. And so, um, Veronica will get that posted and added to the agenda so that people can actually pull it down because we didn't have it obviously until right now.
I apologize. And I just want to let everyone know that I'm suffering from the side effects of my COVID vaccine from this weekend. Um, so please excuse me if I'm a little foggy. I'll do my best. Okay, can everyone see my screen? All right. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, trustees, district leaders and West Contra Costa community. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share our district's safety preparedness update as it relates to the safe reopening of our schools for in-person instruction. Oh, takes a lot of, let's not moving it to the next one. Okay, here it is. Sorry. The mission of the district safety department is to develop school safety plans and a district-wide disaster preparedness plan focusing on mitigation, preparedness, response and recovery to minimize loss of life and property, which will be achieved through planning, training, exercising and establishing an emergency information system. This mission statement serves as the framework, purpose and goal for our work and the development, implementation and communication of our district's COVID safety plans. We have developed four comprehensive COVID safety plans that are aligned with the CDPH guidelines and the county office of ed recommendations. The first is the COVID protection plan, otherwise known as CPP. This is the overarching district plan that outlines our general safety guidelines as specified by Cal OSHA. And Dr. World and Mr. Duffy has spoken in length about this document at, um, multiple meetings. We also have another document called the COVID nineteen school guidance checklist. This is an assurance checklist which specifies who and how safety measures and protocols will be implemented throughout our district. Both of these documents are required by the county and must be posted seven days prior to reopening of our campuses. And they have been on our websites for several weeks now. Next, we have developed the administrators and the family handbooks. Although these handbooks are not required by the county or the state, we have developed them to best support the safety of our staff, students and families. These handbooks contain procedures, processes, pro- protocols and strategies for protection and prevention from the spread of COVID during in-person interaction and activities. And all of the handbooks and, um, plans are attached to this presentation. And now I'd like to review over some of the major elements that are addressed within our handbooks and plans. First, face covering. Cloth and surgical masks, face shields need to be worn at all times except when eating or drinking. Physical distancing, six feet is our district standard. Although the county has recently moved to a three feet as a minimum guidance, our district has chosen to remain with the six feet guidance to ensure maximum safety for all staff and students. Hand hygiene. We ask that everyone engage in frequent hand washing and sanitizing, especially in between activities and movement from space to space. Sanitizing stations have been placed throughout our campuses for easy access and use. Screening. We ask that all staff and students engage in daily health screening before arriving to our campuses. Once on campus, the QR code process will add another layer of symptom screening for staff. And thermometers have also been provided for each classroom for additional screening. Arrivals and departures. Schools will need a stagger arrival and departure times in accordance with their instructional schedules to avoid mass gathering at any given time. All students and staff will be assigned designated gates for entrances and exits and waiting areas to be used consistently at all times. Visitors. No visitors or volunteers will be allowed on our campuses without clearance. And this clearance can be in the form of providing, uh, proof of vaccination, proof of negative COVID tests and/or willingness to engage in onsite testing. Cleaning, disinfecting and sanitizing. All of our custodial staff have been trained in proper cleaning, disinfecting and sanitizing procedures and will continue to follow the county guidelines to regularly and consistently clean spaces after each use. PPE. PPEs are available and provided at each site as required. Each site has been given a monthly allotment based on identified needs. And sites can always order more as needs increase through our district warehouse. Testing. PCR and rapid testing will be available for all staff and students onsite. Reporting. If staff, students and families have had exposure to COVID or have symptoms themselves, it must be reported to our district hotline. It is covid@wccusd.net. That will immediately prompt a response from the COVID response team, which consists of our district nurses, our district safety team, our district facilities team and our HR team. All of the appropriate teams will respond as needed. Within these handbooks, there are two very important documents that we are asking our students and families to sign in order to engage in in-person learning. First is the in-person learning waiver. And I will open that up for you to be able to look at that. Because in-person learning is an optional voluntary opportunity, it is important for families to understand that they are choosing what is best for them, even with the potential risk that may be involved. Although the district has and will do all that we can to support, uh, the prevention of COVID on our campuses, there never can be 100% guarantee. Therefore, we ask families to sign a waiver to release all liability for the district should they choose to engage in in-person learning. So there's a place for students and families to sign and return back to the site. And all of this is electronic. Let me, um, move this document and move on to the next one. The second agreement is the in-person learning contract. Within this contract are safety protocols that all students and families agree to follow in order to engage in in-person learning. Again, due to the fact that this is a voluntary opportunity, we insist on strict adherence to stated protocols in order to stay within the in-person model. This is the document that we would like to more closely examine with all of you and ask the trustees and the committee for feedback and recommendation before we share it with our families. And again, both of these forms are on what is called the inform K-12 system, which is an electronic signature system that will be sent to families and they can electronically sign and it'll be automatically sent back to site administrators. Uh, unfortunately, we did not have the opportunity to work, uh, with the, um, discipline matrix in some of the, um, processes that we put in place here. But we are more than happy to again, update and align with the discipline matrix. So starting with the face covering, as we know, this is the most important safety measure that we have and we insist that all students are wearing their face covering at all times. But should they willfully refuse to wear the mask or, um, uh, fail to comply after several warnings, they may be removed from in-person learning instruction. And that is what, uh, the, the families would be agreeing to hear. Physical distancing. Students will comply with the direction of the staff for physical, uh, distancing. So right now that is six feet for our district and families would be agreeing to adhering to that. Hand washing and sanitizing. Families would also be agreeing to the frequent hand washing and sanitizing protocols that I discussed earlier. Assigned seating. We will also have to insist on assigned seating that students, uh, always stay within their assigned seating. Classroom behavior. We also ask that families agree to adhere to behavior expectations at all times because the safety of everyone is at risk when we are not able to comply with expected behaviors. No visitors. As I mentioned, we will not have visitors, unexpected or unclear visitors on campus at any given time. This includes our, uh, our parents as well. Student drop off and pickup. We ask that students, um, I'm sorry, families do not drop off their students any more than 15 minutes prior to instruction. Because of supervision, uh, purposes, we definitely do not want students on campus, uh, no earlier than that or no later than about 15 minutes after instruction has ended. Also, um, oh, also here, um, here is the statement about students entering and exit, uh, exiting through the same gate and the area and staying within their designated area. Symptoms greener. Parents will also, uh, agree that they will conduct the self-screening, health screening each morning before they send their student to school and that they will keep their student at home should they display any of these listed symptoms. And lastly, uh, about illness. Again, should they have symptoms or be in close contact with anyone who will test positive to COVID or they themselves test positive to COVID, students will, um, uh, agree to not, to come to school until quarantine, um, time is up. So after they have initialed the entire document, students are to sign and parents are to sign again via inform K-12, which is an electronic And parents are to sign again via inform K-12, which is an electronic signature document, and it will be sent back to us electronically.
So that's the real important thing since we're doing this so quickly, having it electronic so that everyone can quickly access it, be able to review it later. In the past, it's not like paper form where you. Sign it, send it back and you never see it again.
But we will also have. Hard copies available because they will be attached to the handbooks and school sites may print them out for families to sign in person. Or families may sign them at home and then bring in the hard copies to the school sites. Our next steps. Based on your feedback and recommendations from the trustees and the safety subcommittee, we will update and revise any of our documents. Then we will share the updated and revised documents with our cabinet for their review and approval. And upon approval, we will then share out all of our plans, handbooks and documents with our staff and families. And that concludes my update. Thank you so much for your collaboration, support and leadership.
Thank you. And now we'll go in to the question from trustee Smithfold.
So I have a couple of questions. I have to say admittedly, this is going to take some time for me to digest because I need to go back and actually look at it more carefully, but. Are we still just using one point of entry for schools?
That is what is recommended. At the same time, we know that on our larger campuses, especially high schools. That may not be the best strategy because the number one goal is to avoid mass gathering. So if we have to use multiple points of entrances or exits, it must be covered by a staff member to supervise.
So a staff member will be there to do the screening or a staff member will be there to make sure that people are six feet apart or whatever. Sounds like another reason we need to hire more CSO. It sounds like when you say staff member, that seems to be code for a CSO. With the parent volunteers, no parent volunteers at the time, how are we going to? Transition and help with elementary school kids coming back for the first time? Or so I'll say kindergartners not being, this is their very first time coming back. And that separation part where they're pulling with mommy, we've all been there, you know what I mean? And it's even worse now because you know mommy can't sit by the fence or mommy can't volunteer in the classroom. What are the strategies that we have in place for that? Because those are going. Kids crying is contagious. So if you have one kindergartner that gets dropped off at that hub that starts crying, then you're going to have a whole room full of it. And when you cry, you snot and masks come off and it's a hot mess because now you're sitting with a mask snot in it. So what are we doing? Transition wise, what are we doing? To help with that? Are we having more adults helping with that kind of? Grace period and helping kids come in? What are we doing at the elementary schools for that?
So that will kind of, I'll kind of respond to that. Part of the way we entered into this voluntary reopening for spring is with the very small class groupings. You're not going to have as much, it's very much voluntary. So you're not going to have as many of those hopefully separation anxieties because it is voluntary. You're not forced to do that. Also, there's communication. With the teacher and their caseload prior to Monday. So Thursday and Friday this week. They'll actually be calling those families so that they can have that little connection, make those logistical. Conversations happen on the front end. That doesn't mean that we're not going to have that crying moment because that was actually my biggest. Thought was, oh my gosh, this is the first day of kindergarten on April 19th. What's going to happen there? We hope though that part of it is as they have that connection. That there will be a programmed. Handoff basically. For those small young kids that are just coming in the first time, that should hopefully prevent some of that. And we also use this volunteer period to be our test case as we move into the summer where there'll be more students and into the fall where there'll be even more students.
Okay, so just. You know, Dr. Will, I hope I'm 20 and 100 pounds. It doesn't work like that. It's going to be a mess. Like the kids are going to have, even those volunteering are going to have a little bit of, oh, I'm away from mom or I'm away from dad or I'm away from my big brother that always watches me. So just to make sure that those first couple of days. Have extra masks to make sure because it's going, the that's, I guess, one of the biggest issues is not just the social emotional part of it, but it's just the safety with the mask.
We have extra PPE. We have a month's worth onsite. For day one. So there will absolutely be additional.
Okay, are we talking to sites about no longer having assemblies? Like they're not having assemblies right now, correct?
They're not doing any major groupings. At all. That's why there's no formal lunch, no formal recess in this model to start off.
Okay, so there is no formal recess in this model that we're doing now. So that means that kids are not going to be using the play structure.
There may be some going outs. Each cohort might do something where they go outside. And they'll, we'll make sure that there's protocols for cleaning if they use the play structures. We're strongly encouraging not. To use common. Structures like that. That if you're going outside, it's more for a walking or something that isn't going to be touching things.
Okay, and then the discipline matrix that you spoke to, when are we going to be able to see that? When is that going to be prepared and ready to look at? Or is it already ready? Am I missing it?
I believe Ms. Smith may be presenting that today.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, it's ready.
Yay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. And then the, the last question I have. Who's watching the kids after school? Because they don't get picked up on time. It's nobody's fault. There's traffic. People are getting back on the roads. It's, things are opening up. Who's going to watch the students who are not picked up on time and how do we prevent mixing of? Pods or cohorts or hubs or whatever we call it? How do we prevent that mixing once they're out of class? Because a teacher is now dismissed. So if you have five people from this one and five people from this one, they get together. I don't know which five is with whom. Like there's no, we're not, are we doing armbands? Or you know, this is class purple, so purple needs to stay with purple, pink needs to stay with pink. How are we making sure that that is consistent and we're not? Mixing all of these kids together. And again, my question is. And I don't want anybody to say CSO, who is watching these children when school ends and it's been 20 minutes and they haven't been picked up yet? And my last one, who is actually watching the isolation room? Because I think we have an isolation room now during that time.
There will, each site will have a dedicated staff member that will have that isolation room responsibility. And should we have to actually use that room? Then that staff member also becomes isolated from other staff members until such time as we've done the pieces. As it pertains to the late pickups. This is a voluntary program. If parents cannot commit. To picking up their children at the appropriate times and it happens more than once. We would probably be, the site administration would be having a conversation about whether this is appropriate for them to participate. Initially, it will likely be the site administrator slash designated will take that responsibility. Of addressing those late pickup students. Again, because it's voluntary, we have a different type of leverage than we normally do. When we go into. Who can stay and who cannot stay there. I'm not going to say zero tolerance, but it's similar to that concept. That if you cannot comply with the safety protocols that are necessary. Then this is not the right. You're not ready to be back in our program. In person.
Okay, trustee Christian, I think that's all for now. Again, I probably will have more Dr. Shen that I would email you once I kind of get to absorb these documents that you have. They are going to be in multiple languages though, right? That's it. That's already a given. These forms.
At least in Spanish, definitely.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's it for now, trustee Christian.
All right, thank you trustee Smithfold. I, I just have just two questions. The first one would be like, like we're actually pertaining to high schools and middle schools. They're going down the hallways where everybody, you know, like in the normal. Everybody go. You know, back and forth. I mean, is it going to be like? You only can go down one particular way of the hallway to exit out. And like say like coming up the stairway. Is it going to be like you come up and you go down on another end of the stairway? Has that been? Charted out?
That would be the district's recommendation. At the same time, we know that different sites have different configurations and different abilities to do that. So we definitely leave it up to each site and their leadership to decide. How they can best configure movement in which students are not directly facing one another. So yes, definitely what you are suggesting, Chris, trustee Christian, is our number one recommendation that if able sites do. Make sure that it's one way in, one way out, it's always the same route. And only, only if it cannot be avoided because of the spacing or the configuration of the school, then they would have to. Configure something different, but at the same time, as long as they limit the number of students. And make sure that they're socially distanced and not in that space at the same time, we can still mitigate the spread. And the. Possible potential of exposure.
Okay, and then, and the other aspect would be the restrooms. You know. Restrooms can become congested.
Yes, 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 definitely. So our facilities team has already marked the number of people that would be allowed within a restroom at a time at all of our campuses. And we are asking site administrators and potentially our CSOs to kind of keep a close eye out in the restroom areas. To make sure that all of our staff and students are adhering to the guidances that are posted immediately outside the bathroom door.
And this is also why we are not having formal lunch or recess where you have everybody out gathering. And clustering together during the spring reopening.
Okay, yeah, and, and what I was just going to just bring. You know, you know, along with that, it goes back to, you know, on the sites that don't have female. Safety staff. You know, to be able to go in and regulate. You know. In that aspect.
Yes, you make a great point. We will definitely add that to the list of reasons why we need to hire more female CSO staff.
Yeah. And I'll just leave that we've been using the same comment kind of over and over again, but everyone's focus needs to be on two words. Space and grace. The idea that there's got to be significant space between individuals. And if we have grace for each other, and I'm talking student to student, staff to staff, everybody. Just have some grace, have some patience. We've gotten used to standing apart in. The grocery stores. We've gotten used to it in other places. We can do it in school too. And we just keep that common calm messaging. Space and grace all the way through. And hopefully. And I, I know hope's not a strategy, but hopefully we can. Allow this to be the springboard for the continued safety as we go forward.
Okay, that's, that's great. All right. Are there any public comments?
I am looking for hands. And one has come up. So, Mr. Glazer.
Okay, so. Thank you so much, everybody for the conversation. And again, Joseph Glazer, history teacher at Hercules Middle. And. So that was one of the things I was really wondering because I asked during my last staff meeting, you know. Is there a policy for mask wearing and what is it? That's my number one concern with going back in person. And I feel like. The. It's kind of like a four strikes and you're out is what it sounds like, which seems reasonable the way it's set up. And one thing I would say though. The willful part is a little tricky because. The student is probably going to claim that it was an accident and they can claim it was an accident over and over and over again. And I'm just saying like realistically, you can't really prove willful intent. And so I think it just has to be like. If it's not just like a momentary, okay, it goes below the nose, then that's like, that's it, like that, that counts as a warning, right? Because that's really, really hard to prove. And with that said, I think this will be a very small problem in the spring. Overall, hopefully, because it is voluntary and I think parents are going to be very insistent. On the kids like, hey, you know, this is something we need to do as part of this program. This is really important for your safety, et cetera. So I don't anticipate it being a huge problem, but I also can just see myself as a teacher in that situation. In kind of the tug of war and the struggle like, oh, I didn't mean to, it was an accident. But if like it keeps happening, then that also needs to count. I guess that's my point of view. But overall, you know, I'm excited for the program. I'm excited to be volunteering in, in the hub. And you know. I guess just hoping for the best.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Baronian.
Hi, everyone. This is Christina Baronian. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Lincoln. It's nice to see everyone today. I had a question about masks and the ventilation issue. So our classrooms get extremely hot. There's virtually no airflow. It's like a sauna in there. And although we won't be having as many human beings at the same time. I go in there by myself on the second floor and it is in the eighties and gets up to the nineties. So I actually told my kids about the, you know, voluntary reopening. And the mask wearing and their question was, and my kids, I mean, my fourth grade class. They said to me, well, how are we going to wear masks when we're sweating and it's so hot and we can't breathe? So I said, you know what? That's a great question. I'm going to ask the school board and they can answer that question. So I'd really like to know because we have a huge problem. We need air conditioning in our classrooms. A window that opens a couple inches is not enough. There's no airflow in the rooms. I'm on the second floor of a building. There's no cross breeze. So even if we keep the door open, there's no cross breeze. So I'm wondering what is going to be done about this because the masks are exacerbating this problem. And we need to be able to breathe. And we can barely breathe without masks. So. What are we going to do here? Please help. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Mark Moran.
Yeah, hello, I'm Mark Moran. I'm a middle school teacher at Hercules Middle. I'm sorry, I had my wife and daughter both talking to me during this presentation, so I'm not sure if I missed something. But I did type a few questions on the panelists and I appreciate trustee Smithfolds for overlapping some of them. But my, my big question is, is all of this written down? So. You know, I, actually Mr. Glazer asked me that question about the masks. I said, oh, that's in the CPP. So then I looked at the CPP and all it said is masks are mandatory. And none of the rest of that detail is in there. So my, I guess one question is, where is all this going to be written down? Because otherwise it does all fall into teachers. The policy right now is that parents are supposed to pick up their students, but most of our K, K three teachers miss their prep. Nearly every day because one or two parents don't do that. So I hope that everything's going to be clearly written down and specified so that we don't have. These kinds of, of, of questions. And also it was very unclear to me how we're going to stagger arrivals. When we have, you know. Families with students from multiple grade levels. I would love to hear more detail about that. Thank you.
That is it for the public comment.
Thank you. And now we go to comments from trustee Smithfolds.
I do want to lift up the fact that in the chat, it said, can these be videoed? So parents who may have a hard time digesting the length of each of those little kind of clauses. If it's video, then you can kind of listen to it. So I think we do need to kind of honor that and maybe put a. Video version plus the written version of, and a video version in Spanish plus a written version in Spanish, video version in English plus a written version. So parents can take a moment and kind of like. Really understand what they're signing. I think that's imperative. I'm also hearing a lot of, you know, our admin are going to do it, our staff may be having to do it, our CSOs may have me to do it. So we, that's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, even bringing back a small amount of people is a lot of work because it hasn't, it's bringing back to a whole new situation. So I just want us to. Value that amount of work that's going to be put on people and to give them enough space to be able to do it correctly. So we need to make sure that our admin have enough time. Our teachers have enough time, our staff have enough time, our CSOs have enough time to be able to get this done correctly. We do need to. Figure out this ventilation thing. Second floor, 80 degrees. We can't have kids passing out like that's even if they're spaced out. We can't have kids feigning or passing out or. we can't have kids fainting or passing out, or God forbid, teachers fainting or passing out. That's no good. So we need to figure that out. If Dr. Wool, if we can push that to Mr. Freeze, so he can really go in and look at these specific classrooms that are being used that have second floor and lack ventilation and whatever we need to do to make sure that that's safe for the kids before they go back and the teachers before they go back. Thank you, Dr. Shen, for giving us those, so giving the presentation and the forms. I know that I know there's a lot that still needs to be done. There's a lot of things that we need to kind of flesh out with that. I do agree that things need to be written down, because only if it's written down can we place accountability where it needs to be placed. So we need to be very clear about what we're asking, what we're requiring and what we're mandating. You know what I mean? And we also need to really think about, I'm very curious to say, what happens if a parent decides that they're dropping off Sally and it's kindergarten, it's her first day, and the parent doesn't leave? What are we gonna do? Are we gonna drag them off the campus, kicking? It's like, you know what I mean? Like, there has to be, I say that because I was that parent. What are we gonna do? If, you know, and this was pre-COVID. I was that parent, be like, oh, I'm staying right here. I'll sit across the street and I'll watch. Like, what, how are we going to make sure that we re- we are really building that trust with our families and our students and everyone that's involved? You know, are we, are we making room for, okay, I get it, you're kindergarten, you're a little nervous. Hey, I know your brother's here in second grade. Can we even do that now? We used to do it before COVID, because we would go get the second grade brother and they would kind of nurture the little sister. Now we're mixing, that would mix a pot. So now we can't do that anymore. So what do we do? So these are just things that I want us to start really thinking about and fleshing out and be able to tell parents, you know, is it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna FaceTime you with my phone. I'm a teacher, I'm gonna FaceTime you so she can see you and she knows that you're gonna be right back. What are we, what are these strategies that we're gonna implement? Because they're gonna come up again and again in the fall. So if the spring is our time to practice, and I think we need to practice all of the things that are gonna happen. And this is something that's gonna happen. So, Trustee Christian, that's it. I am, I'm finished for now. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, Trustee Smith Folds. And I, I don't have any comments, because much has been said pertaining to everything. And so, um, uh, we'll close out and then we go to the next item.
Okay, so we're gonna reverse course now and try to knock out Harbor Way, which is a revisit of a conversation we had last time with La- LaShante and Phil, and they're gonna go back a little more in the history on why, why we're kind of getting a recommendation for that program that we do need to serve kids with. So I'm gonna hand it to them. Then we're gonna try to knock out athletics, and we still got our counselor group here too, so balancing all the time as we go. LaShante and Phil.
Thank you, Dr. Wold. Good evening. It is evening. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here and happy to present not only about Harbor Way, but if you all recall our last conversation, we were talking about schools' climate supports in general and what's really needed to not only support our students, but support our schools and making sure that they are able to support our students. So Phil and I are going to kind of tag team this presentation, and I'm gonna start by sharing my screen. Alrighty. Okay, so. So just want to remind us again of our theory of action around school climate in our district. And it's really based on if we use data to make our decisions and we utilize a multi-tiered systems of support, then we will continue to see district-wide positive relationships that are grounded in restorative practices, positive behavior interventions and supports, as well as trauma-informed practices. So then when we go back to school climate, I know we're, we were asked to talk about Harbor Way, but we can't talk about Harbor Way without talking about the greater umbrella of school climate. And so when we think about school climate and what are the roles and responsibilities of this department, there's several responsibilities. Some of them include safety. School climate encompasses discipline, and that means suspensions, expulsions, and the expulsion hearings. A school climate encompasses our justice impacted youth. So we do have young people who are involved in different situations who have to come back to school after a period of time in juvenile hall. So we have to make sure that we're providing support for our justice impacted youth. Not only that, but I heard a lot of comments tonight about social and emotional health for our students. And that's a key part of climate. We want to make sure that students feel safe and supported, not only physically but emotionally. So really having supports on campuses for students in the social, emotional and behavioral realm. Then alternative education also falls under school climate. So what do we do for students who are not responding to typical school environments and who need an extra layer of support? Then, um, under alternative education, we have alternative programming. Maybe it's not a place that a student needs, but it's the specific type of program. So how are we supporting those students? And then we have our PBIS coaching, our social emotional learning support. We have specific student support, and then we have our restorative justice facilitation. Um, I also linked like an exhaustive duty list, but due to time, I won't click it, but it just shows that, again, it's way more than this. It's, I think about transfers, it's thinking about updating board policies, thinking about updating um, our district policy. So there's, there's just so much that goes into all of school climate and the major roles and responsibilities. So if we're specifically talking about Harbor Way, we wanted to provide some history to both you and Trustee Smith Folds and Mr. Christian. We wanted to make sure that you had the true history of Harbor Way to the knowledge that we have. It's to the best of our knowledge. And so Harbor Way has been around for a long time. And I tried last year to do like a whole project on, hey, how did Harbor Way start? Where did it start at? Why is it even called Harbor Way? So Harbor Way was a separate facility and it was located on Harbor Way in Richmond. And that's why it got the name Harbor Way. It was a separate school and there was embedded supports for students. And so this school operated as a separate school for a while, and then it merged into a campus that was shared with North Campus, which was a, another alternative district program. So that happened and then the two campuses shared space for a while. And then after that, Harbor Way was merged with Crespi Middle, and it became a classroom as part of Ca- Crespi's campus, but it was still a separate program. So I will be honest with you and say that when Phil and I started working in student services, there was no real set criteria for student entry or exit through Harbor Way. It was more of a like, kind of like, I don't even want to say a free-for-all, but that's what it was. It was when I first visited the program, there were students as young as fourth grade, there were students as old as twelfth grade, and they were all in a classroom and they were all receiving different types of different types of support, but it wasn't really clear on what the structure of the program was and what the main goal of the program was. Harbor Way's main goal, however, was supposed to be a place for students who had extensive behavioral needs. So for whatever reason, these students either had internalizing conditions that kept them from being able to be on a comprehensive campus or externalizing behaviors that required a new type of placement for students. It was also supposed to be a place for students to receive more credits. So if students were deficient in credits, they could come to Harbor Way and get more credits than a traditional school would offer. And then it was a place for students who were in the middle of an expulsion hearing. So it was either, I'm in the middle of expulsion hearing, and in the interim, I'm going to be placed at Harbor Way, or in lieu of being placed at Harbor Way, I'm, I'm going to be transferred there because of a disciplinary issue. And then there was this other kind of loose criteria around sites. So sites may talk to a certain student and family and say, hey, we have this program in our district called Harbor Way. It's a small program and we think your students should go there. So again, it was very like, it was all over the place with what students went there, how they went there and the process to get them there. I will say too, that the most important thing to emphasize about this is that once the students were there, there was not a clear exit criteria. So if I'm here as a student, how long is this program? And then when do I exit? What am I expected to do to exit back to a typical school environment? So I want to emphasize that that was not, um, very clear.
And I just want to step in and say that when LaShante and I took over the program, there, there's students that had been there for two or three years, and that's not the purpose of what we were trying to do. We kind of wanted to make it a formatted, but you know, LaShante will tell you more about that and some more slides.
Yeah. Yeah, that's important too. And then there were students who were coming, like Mr. Johnson said, who were there for like two, three years. And then they would go back to their traditional school site and they may come back within two weeks, because this was just a place where, again, we have Harbor Way, so let's send students there. So right now, the status of Harbor Way. Again, the last placement was at Crespi. Crespi, um, co-located with the charter, and because of that, they did not have room to house the program. So Harbor Way does not have a present campus, so there's no physical location for the campus. Last year, we worked a lot on trying to establish criteria for Harbor Way. What students did we want to serve? What supports would be there? Um, before students could be referred to the program. As we were doing that, we were kind of like setting up a model, but we were also thinking about what would be the best place for Harbor Way as far as the physical location in our school district. What we found is that the majority of the students who were referred to Harbor Way, they, there was a transportation issue and getting to Crespi because of the, the bus lines. So the bus lines, um, were not directly connected to Crespi, and so we were having a difficult time with establishing transportation. So we looked at a bunch of different schools in our district. Um, some of the schools that we were considering last year were Dejane Middle. We looked at King and we looked at Coronado. We looked at those schools because they were a central location. They have bus lines and the majority of our students who were being referred for additional support were in the, like, that downtown kind of area. So we wanted to make sure that we had a program that was appropriate for the students that we were getting, um, most of the referrals for. And we wanted to make sure that it was really built into a community day school model that had these embedded supports. When we went to the board, it required a majority board vote of yes to co-locate. The school site that we had originally proposed, again, after looking at all the sites and what space they had to offer, uh, we eliminated two and came up with Coronado. The reason for Coronado was because it had a separate entrance and it had a, uh, two separate classrooms that students would be able to receive services in. And, um, there was like a, another playground that students could actually go onto the playground while their peers were, while Coronado was kind of engaged in their own learning. And, um, it was just like a very, it made sense. It was, it was easy, um, and there was the support there. However, when we went to the board, it was not approved. We didn't get the majority vote. And so that was actually the last meeting before COVID. It was the last board meeting before our COVID shutdown. And so since then, we haven't had, um, a physical location. But Phil and I have continued to think about Harbor Way and to continue, we've continued to think about the support that's really needed at that school site to make it, um, a true community day school model. So our proposed next steps is to create the program at Greenwood. And we thought of Greenwood because we think it could be a continuity of services with, uh, with in Greenwood, and we'd want to house many of our, uh, school climate initiatives and our student services work through Greenwood. So when I talk about a school climate or student services kind of department, there's no real department. It's Phil and I, um, holding the work. And so Phil, as you know, Mr. Johnson, as you know, is the principal at Greenwood, so he's there. Um, and then I've been working this year at Greenwood. So we would continue to, uh, support Greenwood, but expand it to really house all of school climate and student services work. And I want to say that in our proposed next step is that we want to create a viable option for all students kindergarten through twelfth grade. However, we do not think that Harbor Way is a viable option for students in kindergarten to third grade. That's extremely young. So what we want to do is we want to make sure students in those younger grades have supports and that we're there to determine the best programs and supports for these younger students. But we do not think Harbor Way is the support. Um, research shows that it's not actually beneficial to take a kindergartner through third grader, um, and to put them in a different environment and to try something and then push them back in the environment. It would be better for them to stay in their school environment with embedded supports. Um, however, when we start getting to the upper elementary grades and middle school grades, we think that we can create a program for fourth through eighth grade and still be very, very specific about what students are actually accepted to Harbor Way and if this is an appropriate program. Because even fourth and fifth grade is a bit young to send a student to, um, an outside alternative program such as this. And then, we're also proposing that high school students will be supported by a separate teacher for programming needs. And this really comes into play when we think about our students who are up for expulsion. And so if you all are, are aware of the expulsion process, sometimes it takes twenty to twenty-five days for a student to receive an expulsion hearing. So in the meantime, they're in limbo. They're sitting at home. They don't have access to curriculum and they're falling further behind. So we want to propose that in this model, that students would be supported by a teacher. And we have kind of bounced off ideas about, is, is that virtual support? Is that, um, in-person support? Is it a hybrid support? If it's, it's, is it a mix of the two? But the main thing is that those students would have support to services while they're kind of in limbo for that twenty-five to thirty-day period. And so that they're not actually being further alienated from the school environment. We want to make sure that they're supported. So then Harbor Way would be a transitional program. That would be overemphasized that this is not a place that students come for a whole year. However, each student will have like an individualized learning plan and they'll be set goals. And our goal would be to help the students meet those goals before they return back to the traditional school environment. And so, um, the referring principal and the parents would know that Harbor Way would be temporary. It's not meant to be a whole school year, but it's meant to be a program to provide students with the needed supports. So then they're able to go back to their school sites, um, in function. And so we'd want to make sure when they're back at their school sites, they still have those embedded supports. And then I just want to kind of explain the process. So, again, we're proposing that Harbor Way be at Greenwood. But there are some things that the state requires from us. So the first thing is that we have to make this announcement at a public school board meeting. And we have to publicly say, hey, we want this program to be at Greenwood. And we talk about the community day school model, we talk about the program. Then after that public announcement, we would survey the Greenwood community. So we would still, um, send out a survey. We'd ask families how they feel about it. We'd ask students how they feel about it. We'd ask community members. And as we're doing that, we'd gather all of this data, then we'd come back to the school board after making that public announcement. We'd come back as an agenda item for the school board to actually approve, um, an action to uh, for this co-location to be at Greenwood. And then during that time, we'd present like, hey, this is what the families are saying, this is what the community is saying, um, and these are next steps. So it's a two-point or two-part process to actually get the program to be at Greenwood. And, um, it, it's all contingent upon what happens at the school board meetings and the kind of data we get from the community. Now, if we made this public announcement and there was like backlash, no, we can't have this at Greenwood. No, this is not the place. And we know that the community says, no, we don't want it there, then we would go back to the drawing board and say, hey, this is not the best option. However, we have to kind of do it in that process before we formally start surveying people to see if this is okay for folks.
And so with five board meetings officially on the books left, that's part of the reason why we're bringing this back forward. So we can determine what our next steps are. Sorry, just wanted to throw that in.
No problem. And then I'm just gonna end with, okay, so what do we need to make this happen? So I, again, did not just, we did not just include Harbor Way. We want to really think about this as an umbrella of services. So I remembered trust, I think it was Trustee Smith Folds last time said, well, what is needed to like fully staff? And when someone asks us what is needed, we're just gonna throw out the sky right now, or whatever, throw out all the stuff. I don't know. I know the saying. So the staffing that's needed for school climate, we do need like another coordinator or someone who's able to support all of like student services and what we've been doing, including all of like student services and what we've been doing, including coaching for school sites, behavioral support, data collection, training, and SCL coaching, really being that kind of center for holding like mental health and behavioral health support like around the district. Because sometimes students don't respond to site-specific supports and they need that extra layer. And that's really where student services and the school climate work comes in is like, what are we doing for those students who need that extra layer of support and how are we supporting them? It would be great to have someone who's trained specifically in trauma-informed practices and who's able to to facilitate RJ circles and restorative community circles on campuses. That's actually been a big need of ours. I've been doing some work. I have a couple colleagues who have been doing some work. But there are campuses who want to be trained in restorative practices. They want to have those facilitation skills. And we don't have that current support in-house, so it's kind of like whenever we can get it, we go out and do the training, but it would be great that if we if we had one person who could then train the different folks for this work. We don't want to forget about our foster homeless and justice impacted youth. That is like a separate entity. They need case management support. They need to, we need to make sure that when we have students who are coming back to us from our justice system, that we're not just dumping them into a school and saying, here, go to school and do everything well, but we also have that case management support for them. And then counseling support, we this year piloted during distance learning. We piloted a centralized counseling support through Seneca. And right away, we got over two hundred referrals across the district for counseling. We know that all schools aren't funded the same, so there are some school sites who do not have any services. We know there are elementary school sites who don't have any services. And so we've got a lot of requests for students to get counseling support. And really not intense behavioral needs, but that preventative support and that behavioral need that may be a little more intense, but we don't have like a centralized support for that currently. So it'd be great to have that embedded in our system where, I mean, my vision would be like we're training interns. We're making sure that all of our sites have these supports available to them and that we're we're tracking what's happening. And so instead of constantly partnering with the different organizations coming in, that we really hold this work as a district and we're really true to it because when we, I'm not going to go on that tangent. And then the second thing would be bilingual clerk support, just someone who's able to really look at who's coming in, the administrative like kind of duties, paperwork. And then notice I I kind of bolded support that could be for both programs. So going back to social worker, mental health support, Harbor Way would need that, but school climate initiative in general needs that. And then behavioral health support, like what does that look like? Are those behavioral coaches in the classroom? Are those centralized folks that go out and support teachers with like classroom management and best practices around implementing a PBIS framework? But really thinking through like, what does that look like and how can we hold that work internally as a district? And then for Harbor Way, currently, there's one full-time teacher. And the program we propose, there would have, we would want three because there would be an upper elementary program and then there would be the middle school and then high school, and those are each very different type of programs with different types of needs. And we would need trained paraprofessionals to support the program. I think there's currently two allocated to the program, but we would need an additional person. We put a roving campus safety officer. And that's just someone who again could build those relationships and with the student students, you know, know that there's someone there that is there for their physical safety and emotional safety. And then school psychologist support to make sure that there is someone allocated to the site for specific supports at Harbor Way. So this is the last slide. So next steps is we want to begin the process for the Greenwood co-location. We want to make sure that we have the structure and support for the program to become that community day school, starting in the fall of this year. And then again, for the school climate, really thinking of Greenwood as the hub for student supports and climate, making sure that each student that comes through gets that individualized support and care and really thinking about what they need to succeed. But we do need additional staffing for that. We want to make sure that we're communicating to school sites about school climate and the supports that are available to students post-COVID. Because again, students pre-COVID were already dealing with things, right? And so we want to make sure that we are really emphasizing that students are going to come back at different places. And we want to get ahead of that and we want to make sure that they're supported. And then I put, I talked about this last time, but this was, we did a big study of what's happening around our discipline in this district. And we worked with a group called Impact Justice. And at some point, we want to share those recommendations around what we can be doing as a district to really address our significant disproportionality when it comes to our African-American youth. And that is all. Phil, did you have anything to say, Mr. Johnson?
I just want to add, the first year that we had student services, there were four hundred students that came through. The next year was five hundred. And who knows what's going to happen, you know, when students come back from COVID. We've already, just in COVID, this year, we've had about a hundred and fifty students come through our door. So you know, we're anticipating that we're going to have to retrain our students. And if that doesn't work, then we have this resource to help them.
So that is the presentation for questions. Knowing that one of the outcomes we're looking for is guidance on the ability to bring to the full board the conversation about the placement of Harbor View so we can begin that Harbor Way, so we can begin that process. Knowing that we have the twenty-eighth of April, then we have two meetings in May and only one meeting in June before school lets out, though there's two board meetings in June. So timing wise, it's one of those we want to have that conversation. Plus, we're also building the budget for next year and what we will be able to provide staffing wise. Okay, questions?
Trustee Smith Folds.
Um, so Ms. Smith, would Greenwood be your optimal place? Do you want it at Greenwood or do you want it at Coronado or another site? Like what do you, what do you and Mr. Johnson want? Do you want it? Do you want it at Greenwood?
Yeah. We initially Greenwood was like a fourth backup, but then in actually thinking it through, it just makes more sense to have it at Greenwood so that Greenwood is really like that hub of student services and support.
And these kids, the four through eight, they're going to be separated from the high school Greenwood kids, correct? They're going to be in their own.
Correct.
Separate time.
Co-location, we mean co-location. They're going to have their own entrance, what they need to do or their own place of eating. All of it's going to be separated out for them.
There's some things that we really need to do. We are going to have to create a separate entrance for them. And we're going to have to establish a place where they can have their recreation. But it's possible. And again, we want to have everybody on one campus so we can like manage the program.
And they can get all those student services that you're talking about because it's all going to be located at Greenwood. Okay.
Right.
And then does the, does a district provide transportation for kids that may not be in the busing area? Like you said, that when it was that, you tried to pick a central location because it's easier for kids to catch the bus line, like the bus line to this location. What if you have a kid from Hercules? Would the district provide transportation? Would it be on the parents to get transportation there? What would that look like?
So the district has provided transportation in the past. But that's something that we need to put into our budget. So we want all of our students to to be able to to safely come to Greenwood and then safely go home.
Okay. And then you talked about what the entry policy used to be. What's the current entry policy? Is it the same as the slide that you showed, Ms. Smith, or is it different?
Current, like our proposed entry?
Right. So would it be still recommended by a principal? Would it be like, what's the current? What are you looking? How are you looking to enter kids now?
So we had two. So one was if students have experienced difficulty with behaviors and they're at a certain number of days of suspension. So if they have reached like ten days of suspension, then and they have not responded to site intervention, then a principal could begin a referral process to explore Harbor Way and to explore if this is a program. But where our pushback was is that sites have to implement site-based interventions. They cannot continue to send students elsewhere without first inter making sure that they have evidence that not only a student was referred to intervention, but they received intervention and then they need data around how that student responded. So that if they should come to Harbor Way, we're not trying an intervention that had already been implemented. We're trying something new and different. And then the other one was if students are actually put up for expulsion. So it was kind of like that pre-phase. They're thinking like there's this pattern of behavior. We've tried to intervene or we're actually putting the student up for expulsion.
So we need to make sure that sites have the proper support to make sure that they are doing the intervention processes. So kids don't just get pushed out to Harbor Way or pushed out to Greenwood or whatever, that there are certain protocols and certain things that sites have to hit to make sure that they are doing the their due diligence to make sure that these students are getting the supports that they need, right?
Document their intervention techniques. So that was something that we were really a stickler for. But they also had to be under the understanding that, okay, yeah, we'll we'll take you at Harbor Way. But just know that the student will be returning to you in four to six weeks.
So it's more of a reason to make sure that our sites have psychologists, health resources, mental health resources, counts, all the things that we're talking about. Now, this is more of a a reason for them to make sure that they have it. If our sites have everything they need, we should see your numbers dramatically go down.
Right. And then we, for the students who are like, hey, there's a bit more. We're just not sure what to do with the students. We do need the support to be able to go out to schools to give a second look, to give some like coaching to whoever that person is at that site working with the student so that they're empowered to support the student. And so we have a team, we had a team. It was like a school climate team and we were piloting it for the last two years to see what was it, what would it be to support like schools and kind of this hub model? And so we had four schools assigned to one climate coach. And they were the ones going out to those sites, but working with the sites' resources that were already there to help a student. And so, yes, it's super important that we have these resources at our school sites so that we can provide this additional layer of support to wrap around our students, if that makes sense.
It does. So I I really want us to increase our wraparound services. And when, I have a concern a little bit. When you say you have, you're going to have one kind of general ed teacher, one middle school teacher and one high school teacher, with that high school teacher, it's hard because high school's so subject-specific, you know what I mean? Like high school has biology teachers and English teachers and, you know, calculus teachers. And so when you're looking for this one unicorn, what are you looking for as that high school teacher? Because you want to make sure you're able to provide the students with the help with the curriculum that they're looking for. Does that make sense? Like, would it, would you need more than what? I happen to have a double major. Would you need more than one teacher at that high school or that middle school level because it's different than elementary school?
No, it makes perfect sense. And actually, Mr. Johnson, I went through this scenario earlier. So what we'd want is to, when we talk about high school, at the high school level, it would really be for students who are pending expulsion. And during that time, that would be where we would kind of create programming for that student to still stay connected. And then if, say, at the end of that expulsion hearing that we decide like, hey, this student is not actually going to be expelled from the district or the hearing results in saying that the student is staying in our district, that student may not necessarily go to Harbor Way, right? They may go, we would want them to go back to their school site and then we would have the embedded case management support for them at their school site because their programming is so specific. But we also talked about a different scenario wherein if the student is goes through the expulsion process and then it's determined that that student is staying in our district, but their school site may not be the best place for them, that student would then be enrolled at Greenwood. So Greenwood has its own program, but we would have that connection so that that student is now in the correct programming at Greenwood. So that high school teacher would only be kind of that interim teacher to provide that support while that student is like in limbo and looking for a program. And then we we would decide if the typical traditional high school is the best route or should we enroll them in Greenwood?
The alternative high school. Right. So you have, you have a very clear, it sounds like you have a very clear exit pathway now that did not exist before. So that, so you're not going to have a kid sitting there from middle school to high school with at Harbor Way. My final question is, and this is just curiosity, are you going to keep the name Harbor Way? Because you're not on Harbor Way anymore, like?
No, no, our our name is Greenwood Academy.
But with the
For Harbor Way.
Harbor Way, would Harbor Way, would it become Baby Greenwood? Like what would, like, what's the name of this new, what program going to be?
I I don't know.
That's a good question. We haven't thought about that.
It's something that we certainly could look at once we get the landing spot. Identifying the name to be more directly related to the services provided there. It could be as simple as our community day school. It could be a lot of different things depending on where we land once we get. Step one of where is it and do we have the system and structure in place to make sure it's done right?
So at the end of this meeting, what you're looking for is direction to bring it back to the board.
That's correct.
Okay. Trustee Christian, that's all my questions right now.
Thank you, trustee Smith Folds. And the question I have is the the lowest grade that that's in there is what, like third, four?
It would be fourth grade.
Fourth grade?
Under very specific circumstances. So we are still aware that fourth is super young. So we still want to make sure that they're being first provided support from their school site before Harbor Way is determined an alternative.
Okay, so that's where the wraparound services come in the pla- in into action.
Correct.
Okay, let me ask this question. Are the parents somewhere brought in the midst of the picture? You know, to kind of bring them in to kind of help the parents out?
Yeah, so we had, when we were thinking of the proposal for last year, we wanted to do every student who comes to Harbor Way, it starts with like this circle of care. And so if we had, we, last year before, cut from A, we had a social worker and we had a dropout prevention specialist. And we had another gentleman who was working in community engagement with justice impacted youth. And our goal was to really have this circle of care so that the parents know that there's support for their students and we really want every student to have that individualized support so that we can wrap around the student and wrap around the parents. Because sometimes the parents actually requested, like, could we have like family therapy or are there other supports that you can offer? You know, myself in helping me understand and better be able to relate to my child. So we want to make sure that that's still a key part of the program is parent and family participation.
And what what I liked about it was they had dedicated time to circles. And, you know, so the students every day would go through some type of social emotional learning, which I thought really benefited them in the end.
All right, cool. And then the other piece would be all right, how, you know, for for us now, how how many students are there presently signed to Harbor Harbor Way right now?
None.
Zero. Right before the pandemic, we had about fourteen students who we'd receive referrals for, but we never were, we could never get a location. So those students, we were trying to support like remotely, basically going to their school sites, meeting with principals, meeting with the student. But it was very difficult without having like a set site for programming.
And we really don't know what it's going to look like when we, you know, return to school full time.
Right. And that's where the wraparound services, the counselors and
So everything
Different components are in place to help the students so they won't end up at Harbor Way.
Right.
All right, that's it. That's all I have.
So we have two public comments. I'm going to go ahead and go to, the first one is a phone number. Last three numbers, five, three, four, four.
Hello there. Can can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Ms. Dill. I'm a longtime veteran senior teacher of West Coast Unified School District. I'm sure I'm held to a certain amount of time. Would that be one minute, two minutes?
Yes, one, one and a half minutes, yes.
One and a half minute, okay. So short and sweet. I've been in the district for seventeen plus years, ELA, ELD. So short and sweet, I've been in the district for seventeen plus years, ELA, ELD educator, primarily the middle school, secondary education. And I'm leaving a comment today with the board to let you know how valuable our counselors are in this district. Our counselors do so many unseen things. They prepare kids for college, they lead classes, they do, um, they do side programs, they make phone calls. Um, yes, they do handle discipline, but that's just really, um, a small fraction of what they do. And to find, to know that counselors are going to be bombarded with huge caseloads of seven hundred and fifty students per counselor just seems obscene. So I am encouraging the board to allocate more funds for more counselors and counseling help in West Contra Costa Unified School District with the coming year, twenty-one, twenty-two. Especially in a time, you know, that we are dealing with so many mental health issues. Um, counselors are beyond a necessity. And we need more of them in our district and we need smaller caseloads. And the only way to do that is to bring in more staff to support the counselors. And this is Ms. Dill. Thank you.
Our second public comment is Joseph Klatzer.
Hi, Joseph Klatzer again, history teacher at Hercules Middle. So doing proper restorative practices doesn't ha- happen automatically by giving educators a few trainings here and there. We need to put our money where our mouth is and fund the staffing. We need behavior specialists trained in restorative justice all over the district to support students and educators. We can't get rid of suspensions without replacing them with stuff, with the proper staffing to have an effective alternative. Prevention and early intervention is key to keeping students on campus and successful in their classrooms. We need full-time staff dedicated to supporting this work on each campus. Some of these interventions could be as simple as having a trusted adult go for a walk around the campus with the student when they're having a tough day. A lot of times that's our CSOs, but right now we just don't have the staffing to make sure that's always possible. They're oftentimes needed elsewhere. We have students whose needs are not being met currently, as evidenced by the small number of students who are being sent to the office repeatedly uh, all year long, but have no solutions and the cycle continues. We need support to break that cycle and help these students. The current setup is not working. We need to do something differently to actually resolve the issues students face and deal with root causes. We want students to stay on our campuses and in our classrooms. They deserve better. Thank you.
That's it for public comment.
All right, thank you. All right. And we'll go, any comments, trustee Smith Foles?
Um, I have two comments. One, well, maybe three. Uh, trustee Christian, we're pumping up against six o'clock, so I think we need to extend because we're not going to be able to make these next two things. And counseling is very important as well as the athletics. I think we're gonna have to think about an extension. And if we're thinking about an extension, can we think about a little bathroom break with, before trustee Christian? Can we have a little three minutes? And then, uh, my comment to this is I would like the last slide to be given to our money man. The one that says what y'all need, Ms. Smith and Mr. Johnson. And then that needs to be allocated in the budget because we can't, we can't half do this. This is way too important for us not to be able to do it and build out what you need correctly. So I think that that's the most important slide of them all is that you need to have the resources to be able to do the job that's in front of you. So that would be my only comment. Let's please make sure that we can find a way to support uh, Ms. Smith and Mr. Johnson and the great work that they have ahead of them. Because like Mr. Johnson continues to say, and I believe it to be true, we have no idea what's coming down the pike. It's going to be more than we've ever experienced before because the kids are coming back. They're coming back through trauma. They're coming back in trauma. So we need to make sure that we are able to support them the best way that we can. And that's it, trustee Christian. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Smith Foles. And so, uh, make a motion to stand the meeting?
Uh, so move?
Yes.
Do we need to put a time on it, Dr. Wool?
I think you should assume seven because I don't want to shortchange counseling. There and we have quite a few of our professional leaders from the counseling ranks here. Um, Tashaka will go fairly quick on athletics so we can get into the counseling. And I'd recommend if we're going to take that three-minute break, we do that. Because he was supposed to leave at six, but he'll stay a couple of minutes later to do athletics.
Okay. Um, trustee Christian, I move that we extend the meeting to seven o'clock, allowing for a three-minute break now to come back at five fifty-nine. I don't know if I can combine those, but I can combine those.
Yeah, so we can do that.
All right. So Dr. Wool and trustee Christian, that means we're back at five fifty-nine?
Yep. Veronica's gonna put the timer up and we'll run two, um, one and a half minute timers.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna jump right back into the meeting here. We're gonna do a real quick update on what's been going on with athletics. Um, Tashaka Meriwether is here. He's our director of K-12, our coordinator of K-12 athletics, district operations, youth voice and everything that is kind of cool there. So Tashaka, if you can kind of go through it, and then we have Julio that will be here to backfill if Tashaka has to jump off.
Yeah, Tony, are you able to, um, I guess, bring me the video? I don't need to be, but I noticed it says it's fail to start the video.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that is. It probably is your computer thing.
It was working earlier, but anyhow, I don't need to be on video. Okay. So do you have the presentation up or do I need to share my screen or?
Share your screen, please.
Okay. All right, we, you guys hear the presentation?
Well, yeah, there, there it is.
Okay, so, um, again, Tashaka Meriwether, part of the K-12 operation team. I like to say doing everything that's cool. So I'm working with young people every day. Um, so I'm very excited about that. And let's see, yeah. There we go. So I'll just start off by saying my thank yous. Um, we've had a major accomplishment in launching athletics. It wasn't until the conversations about reopening schools and going through, you know, this procedure, I realized, wait, we reopened athletics in the midst of a pandemic. Um, so, you know, all of the student athletes, they've gone through a lot of different things, athletic directors, the coaches, site administrators, you know, the custodial team, um, they've been helping us out tremendously, our CSOs, facilities, and of course, my support team. So, um, you know, I couldn't have done it without them. I'll be really quick on this. What we, uh, have done similar to what Dr. Shen talked about earlier was around consent forms and testing uh, to make sure all the student athletes have gone through that. So, uh, as you guys know, we did that before. We are just wrapping up season one of our athletics, um, program, if you will. Uh, with football, uh, the last games will be this Friday. Uh, cross country's been going on, uh, softball has actually been going on. So water polo, there wasn't enough teams to participate. And then volleyball, as you see, is actually going to get ready to start here. So something that has changed, um, as I mentioned, it's been a, a lot of learning lessons. Um, and excuse me, I forgot to thank our parents, our parents and the guardians who's actually been uh, giving us a lot of feedback on how we can continue to improve some of these systems. Um, as well as things we're trying and things that are working and things that aren't working. So I pray we never have to go through a pandemic like this again. Uh, but we learned a lot of lessons about the system as a whole. So with that, um, our tri-county athletic league, which is the league we are a part of, um, for athletics. Given the experience of our first season that we went through and how certain schools were doing different things as far as uh, spectator policy, testing, uh, and kind of like the, the CDPH allowed and the guidance that it's up to each district to decide. But however, when you're part of a league, just like we're part of a, a school district, we all have to move in concert. So, um, so the league decided that, um, for this next set of sports in season two, we would come out uh, with the universal policy statement from the TCAL, uh, exactly regarding where we all are on spectators, um, attendance, uh, masking and things like that. So for the season two, what we're going to be looking at for the sports, uh, boys golf is going to get started. Uh, tennis has actually been going on a little bit. Baseball, we're really excited about baseball as well as softball that we just had because this is the sport that suffered the most during the pandemic. Their season actually, uh, they didn't have a season last year. And then here we are, you know, barely, uh, pulling up the end of the year. So we're excited for baseball to be able to get in the competition. Um, soccer is gonna get going and track and field. Unfortunately, we, uh, found out last week, we've been working hard for swimming, uh, to resume. But the facility that we use at Contra Costa College is just not going to be available. It's pretty, for us to use for swimming this year. So, um, that's kind of a bummer. But, uh, we're hoping that when the fall rolls around, uh, we can get back on schedule with that. And then, uh, baseball and, uh, excuse me, basketball and wrestling, as well as, I can't see the bottom here, um, is an indoor sport. So we are getting ready to launch our indoor sports for the school district. Um, as soon as this week, actually, under the, the guidelines that have been laid out. So some of, um, now that we have our league that's leading the guidance on, you know, what we should all be doing, the same thing. These are just some of the major bullet points, uh, here regarding, you know, athletes and competing is, uh, wearing masks. And then those athletes that are not competing, uh, what they should be doing as well as, uh, support staff here. Uh, just continued on as far as all sports and competition is huddled. So for instance, if you have baseball, they're saying that, you know, huddle between plays and timeouts, they must preserve a three feet social distance. Um, every coach must continue to wear masks. And then for indoor events, ventilation, uh, must be maximized and all doors and windows of the gym areas must remain open. Um, so this is huge here as we, the facilities have been closed, um, throughout this whole uh, pandemic for the most part, but now we're getting ready to move indoors. Uh, so for that to take place, we gotta have the doors open. But what's gonna end up happening is that the, um, we're not gonna allow spectators for practice. And then as you'll see here, the spectators for the games will also be, um, non-existent for indoor sports.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing for everyone to hear, based on the league, based on safety, based on distancing. Basketball will not have any spectators. There will not be spectators for indoor sports.
Correct. Um, so this is regarding, uh, outdoor fans and things like that, uh, football, soccer, baseball and things like that. Um, and then just the, the last bullet point here at the last principal's council meet on the twenty-fourth. The policy was agreed, reasons of health, safety, um, that we would not allow outside spectators for any of the schools. And this was, I think, a hot topic because we had, uh, you know, some of our private schools that were allowing. And then in West Contra Costa, we allow spectators for home in a way for our schools only. Um, so you could see how the policy, um, was kind of misinterpreted. So the league said, well, you know, we want all families to be able to get the same experience regardless of what school site. So let's come up with something that's equal across the board. To let you kind of get an idea of how, uh, difficult these times are right now. These are just some of the schools that are opting out of indoors just based on testing capacity. Um, and number of athletes that are available at this time that just said, you know what? We want to have a season, but we are not going to, uh, be able to do indoor sports. Um, so this is important, uh, based on the fact that as we set the schedules, we may have a, a, a whole list of schools. But as we go throughout the season, um, some schools may drop out. So we want to still continue to maximize the number of contests. But we're just kind of at the discretion of everyone in every school site as to who's going to be participating. Um, just some quick highlights on our facilities. Uh, the, you know, the players still need to permit, continue to remain, uh, dressed and come dressed for the games. Uh, the locker rooms, they're gonna be limited for, as of right now, they're closed. Uh, but we hope to, with the proper, uh, what is it? Notification and social distance guidelines and all those things have to be up in that. But if we can get away with not having to utilize the locker rooms, uh, the safer we are, the less exposure in spaces we have, the better it is, uh, for us. And then, as I mentioned, the indoor sports will begin as soon as this week. Uh, we sent out notification to sites is kind of what those guidelines look like. We'll continue to do that, uh, throughout the week as we move towards, uh, Monday. And then speaking of which, uh, so when, you know, school coming on board Monday, we're also going to be retesting all athletes uh, across all sports, uh, on this upcoming Monday. What we've been doing so far is it's only required for football, uh, athletes to do, um, weekly testing as part of the game as we move to the yellow tier sports and indoor sports. They actually need to be, um, tested prior to each contest. So it's a little heavier of a lift. Um, however, some of those other sports are not required, but we want to make sure we, we do another blanket, uh, coverage of all of our athletes. And then just a couple of notes here, we are still, um, not still, we're gonna continue to limit our, um, travel restrictions for the districts, so, um, to five miles outside of our district boundaries. So we're looking at Hercules High School, uh, there and then about Kensington Elementary School. And that's just, as we know, to limit the number of exposure and different counties have different things. However, uh, we want to try to limit that as much as possible. And I believe that's my last slide. So, Dr. Wool, if you think I missed anything or if there's any questions?
No, the, the big thing there is that we're actually doing more testing than is required by the rules. Thereby testing all of our athletes will also be doing a blanket testing of all students that are coming back the first week as well. In the orange, you don't have the same required testing cadence, but we're doing more to make sure. We, in football, we only had just for, um, the committee's knowledge, two cases where we had indeterminate. Two cases where we had indeterminate results of the COVID testing. And in both cases, we retested the student and the student was not positive. We have heard anecdotally of some other sports where there might have been a student that had a positive test. That's one of the reasons that we're doing a blanket testing next week to make sure that we've got everything checked. So we're continuing to follow with safety first, safety second, safety third. There, we understand the spectator policies may not be the most advantageous for families. So we're trying to film games and make them available so that the families can watch them later. We're doing each and everything we can to have the best possible experience, but maintain, as I said, safety first, second and third. And we'll take any questions.
Right, thank you. Uh, we go to trustee Smith Foul.
So are you saying that there were some sports that have been actively playing where the students have, the athletes have not been tested?
There was no requirement to test for non-contact sports such as golf and tennis and others. Neither C D P H, C D C, or the league required that. Where testing was required before every game was the contact sports of football. And it was going to be something that we thought was gonna be required for indoor sports. It it wasn't. We are doing it for indoor sports because of the safety piece, but not all sports were required.
Did you, so have you confirmed that there were cases in different sports that we were running in our district? Did you confirm?
Haven't confirmed, heard anecdotally recently over the weekend that there might have been a student that had a positive case. We have not been able to confirm that yet, but in the abundance of. We were gonna test all students anyways for reopening, so we're doing all sports this week.
And Doctor, I will add in there that we are still requiring the pre-screening process. So uh students are, student athletes, excuse me, should be in their cohorts. And we do do the pre-screening and the coaches in the list. So in the event that something did come up, we should be able to contact trace back.
So that's what you're doing now from what you heard this weekend about your contact tracing now?
Well, we always had that in place before even knowing that. We always had pre-screening before every single practice where you had to. A test that you didn't have any symptoms and all those pieces. And we tracked who was present in each cohort each day. So we could always do contact tracing.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're using the equity lens when we're looking at sports. Because even if tennis is not a contact sport, kids are in the same area and they're breathing back and forth and they're, you know, tennis is still. You're still running, you're still breathing, kids are still watching, there's still participation. So we need to make sure that we have the equity lens and all that. Are we doing wrestling?
So uh wrestling is offered and then like all the other sports as schools continue to drop out, it may or may not happen. So uh for instance, bad men, I believe there's only two teams that are participating in bad men. And the question is, well, who do you play against? Is it, you know, the same teams the same time? So wrestling is in the same scenario. I believe right now we have. Initially, we started off with two high schools that said, you know, we're definitely gonna do it. Um, and full transparency, one of the challenges with indoor sports, you have both boys and girls sports. And you have limited facilities. So how do you uh do, you know, volleyball, basketball, girls and boys, bad men and wrestling? At the same campus.
And this plays why J V's may not be possible as well.
Okay, and if we do have wrestling, even wrestling practice, those kids are gonna get tested because that's contact. Like you're literally in somebody's face when you're, or their armpit or whatever you do.
Any indoor sport, we're gonna be doing testing before each match.
Okay, and then, so you just spoke to JV, probably not happening. Middle school sports off the table?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, what, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and this is part of, you know, we led off with C I F. Um, the reason why we're pushing forward is because we're part of a league and, you know, the high school experience. In an ideal world, middle school as well as, don't forget about our elementary sports league that we had once upon a time. So. Um, we're trying to get through this, you know, this year for these seniors. And then, you know, onboard the rest of the sports in the fall, hopefully.
So what we are doing, however, is we are upgrading and updating some of the equipment that we never can quite buy. And have ready for next year. While we're not able to offer everything perfectly this year, we're getting ready to really make sure that we're. Set to support elementary and middle school sports as we do get to more normalized activities.
So that's what you're doing this year is you're trying to make sure some of those things are upgraded because you don't have the sports happening. So you're gonna looking at the hoops and you're gonna looking at the the facilities and making sure that the vol- the volleyball.
Correct.
Okay, um, what about, you said swimming? So at Hercules High School or Hercules, yeah, Hercules High School, they use the pool right next door. Are they able to still use the pool or because all swimming is done, they're done too?
Um, it's a yes and. So the the Hercules does have that pool. However, the majority of the teams, both in our league and our school district use Contra Costa College. So even if Hercules moved forward with that facility, who would they compete against? The other thing from what I heard early on is that uh it was also limited use as well. Um, that facility as far as scheduling and it was contingent upon if we would actually have a season.
So they may be able to practice, but they would not be getting ready for any competition because there's no one to compete with, is that?
Exactly, exactly.
And then when we're talking about, I'm almost finished, trustee Christian, I just have two more. Um, when we're talking about indoor sports, so when we're talking about indoor sports, for example, basketball, basketball games happen at night. So we're at night, we have all the doors open, we have, it's, you know, our campuses are exposed now. Are we all realizing we're gonna need more supervision than not to keep people out of the gym and away from gathering at the door? And does that make sense?
So we may be working to try to adjust game times a little bit as well as part of this process. Because you do them at night more for, one, you don't wanna interfere with the school time, but more also for the spectator experience. That's part of why it's designed that way. So there may, you may see some, especially within our own. District to district schools, a changing of the timeframes of the matches.
When you do play um school to school transportation, is that district transportation or kids supposed to get there on their own?
We are not, because of the social distancing and transportation, that's why we've limited the travel. So that students can get there on their own.
Okay, so then if students are supposed to get there on their own and some of them can't drive, we have to still think about the time because they still gonna need mommy and daddy.
Right, that's what the coaches are all working through.
Okay, and then the two, last two questions, cheerleaders, are cheerleaders coming on the inside or no? Cheerleaders at a basketball game or no cheerleaders at a basketball game?
Not, not inside, outside, yes.
So cheerleaders are at our football games. Here's just a little side note. Everyone is so excited that their children are able to cheerlead now, so they're posting pictures all over social media. Send out a reminder, Mr. Meriwether, that they still gotta had a mask on above the nose. All these pictures and the mask is below the nose. It used to be above the nose, like, and it. Listen, they have forgotten that, that's a picture. We can see what you're doing. So stop posting incorrectly. But as we can see, you're not wearing your mask correctly and you're a cheerleader, which means you project. So we need to make sure that we send out a message to all of the cheerleading coaches and the football coaches that we need to make sure that it's all. They're wearing their mask correctly. And then have we surveyed our schools and athletes for those who are wanting to come back? Have we done that survey for like our indoor sports?
You mean as far as return to school or just participate in athletics overall?
Participating overall, so you can make some kind of like, okay, we have two of the, you know, six comprehensive high schools. Only, we only have enough for one, you know, volleyball team where we only have enough, you know, and that kind of thing. Have we done surveys to parents and athletes about if they are coming back for this kind of phase two indoor sports?
So what has been done is the the coaches have been reaching out to the student athletes directly. Um, and then this conversation is going across school sites. So that list I gave you, that was as of today. Uh, it wasn't that way two weeks ago, but as they do this surveying, you know, St. Mary's is saying, we don't have enough players. The other challenge is unlike uh before, you should ideally only be participating in one sport at a time. Um, so you know, students are choosing, hey, I didn't play baseball, I'm gonna focus on this and I'm not gonna do track this year. So we haven't sent out an official survey, but we've, you know, gauged the interest of the students and that's how we're narrowing down what's available. Um, and then there's attrition. Some of these student athletes haven't been doing much of anything uh for some time. So, you know, now that they've actually began, you know, there are some injuries that may have occurred, um and some students are just kind of dropping out. So our goal is to provide the opportunity for the experience and then encourage as many students to participate as possible.
Thank you so much. Trustee Christian, that's it.
All right, thank you, trustee Smith Foul. And the question that I have is, um. For us the students. When they on the sideline, uh well, actually, let me just put it this, do the students. Uh, are are they aware of that they need to always continue to sanitize their hands and stuff like that? And um. You know, of course, the mask, you know, when they not out there playing or or are they bunched up together on the sideline? Or they kind of, you know, spaced, you know, between each other or. That's a question.
Yeah, so the the guidelines in the guidance says that they should remain socially distanced at all times when possible. So if you take football, for instance, they've even extended what they call the coaching box. We used to go from like the twenty-five to the twenty-five to extend to the ten yard line. So there could be more space available. Um, the guidelines also states that masks need to be worn at all times. Moving into this second tier of sports. Um, I think we need to look more closely at, you know, how we implement this as far as keeping the distance. Uh, limiting the spectators uh for these indoor sports, there's requirements for the balls to be sanitized. And in between timeouts and things like that. Uh, I'm not sure is as far as the hands actually being sanitized during the play. Um, but you know, the safer the better. Uh, and I think for us is just messaging, continue to work with athletic directors and the coaching. Uh, because you being a former coach, when you get into the spirit of coaching, you kind of, everything goes to the wayside, but we can't do that during these times. So just continue to run them. Although we're out there, this is not business as usual uh when it comes to this.
Okay, and um and and it's going to the uh, the, back to the testing. Um, you know, with with all the various school sites, um, has there been a lot of things uh occurring? Or it it's been very minimal, you know, on a small scale?
Are you talking about positive tests or are you just?
Yes, yeah, the positive, yeah.
So again, we have not had an athlete that we've tested have a true defined positive. So we've been very, very lucky. I'll tell you right now, when we reopen, that's not, we're gonna have a positive case. That's just the nature of full numbers there. We've been very lucky. Like I said, we've heard anecdotally, there might have been an athlete. That was in one of those other sports, but I don't have that information today. We've been very lucky. We've been very focused on safety. We're doing the full testing Monday. We anticipate there will be some false positives in that testing and there might even be some actual positives that we'll have to address. Throughout, but we're gonna test it every site on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay, and then will we be able to get that information? Because I know other people, you know, because you hear about things and it's like, wow, we didn't hear about it.
If if there's a positive test where we have to shut down a pod or a hub or something else. You can be assured that we're going to send a notice to the Board of Education there. In fact, we'll probably talk about this to you all in general to say, be prepared. There will be the need to shut down. There's going to be a teacher that doesn't feel well and has to shut down their hub for one day. That wasn't COVID, but just we don't want them coming in. These things are gonna happen. And again, I go back to the space and grace concept. That understand that don't overreact, allow us to do the correct protocols and processes. To maintain the safety. And so same concept here with athletics. Um, there have been um canceled games where another school didn't have enough players to play. And so we've had to cancel matches. This weekend, we had to cancel one of our football games, not for COVID reasons, there just weren't enough athletes available.
And along those same line, uh uh previously, another school had to cancel because they hadn't received their test results. So we have these policies where if we don't get the results in time, you know, it's not safe to get out there and compete. So uh however, we still didn't hear about any positive tests from that incident at all. And that wasn't our school site, that was another school that we were gonna be competing against.
Other districts have had to shut down because of positive tests.
Right. Okay, thank you. And and that's all I have. Do we have any public uh comments?
I'm looking for hands. No one once, twice, and that is that. No hands.
All right, so now we moving on to what, to the last item?
Um, unless there's any other comments on athletics, we've got all our counselors ready to go.
My only comment on athletics is I would love for this presentation to come back to the board. This athletic presentation that you just did, like an update to come to the full board. Also, I would like for you to put something on our website that says numbers, athletes tested. Number negative, number positive, this is what happened. Like give something to not only the board, but something to the public. Not only just around athletics, but around the testing that we do in general. We have to increase the trust, so we have to be as transparent as possible. So something on our website saying, this is the number of students we're testing, this is the number of positive cases, this is where the, you know, this is what the result is. Et cetera, et cetera. Just food for thought. Because you know, Doctor Will, my mouth run like water. So when you tell me, I'm gonna tell everybody anyway. So it's better just to have it out there so everyone would know.
I'm looking at Julio to remind me to take care of that. We'll get, we'll get on that.
Thank you.
All right, and I don't have any comments. Um, pretty much has been said. Um, and so we'll close that item out and we move to the next and last item.
So this one here, we we have a whole group and I'm gonna, at the request of the last meeting, there was a conversation about. What is the current state of our counseling program, the caseloads? We know that this is a high investment issue that we have very high caseloads. We did indeed last year for context, we went to the contract, what the contract stated for counseling. Which ended up eliminating some counseling positions. They're leaving us with even fewer than we had had before. Through several different initiatives, there have been some additional counselors that are hired back or in process. But that did not impact caseload in any way whatsoever. So that's gonna be part of the conversation that we envision. Will happen both through negotiations and through the board conversation about what services our students need. So Allison Huey is our director of college and career. I'm gonna let her kick this off. But as you can see from all the faces, there's several of our professional counselors right here to tell you from their. Um, own viewpoint, what they believe it is. And as C B L, I did not filter their presentation there. So I I'm not saying I endorse anything because I'm the business guy, but I certainly believe we need to have this conversation publicly. So Allison and team, go.
Good evening, trustees and committee members, and thank you so much for inviting us to come and speak about the wonderful work of our school counselors. Um, just to situate it a little bit, um, the college and career department is part of our larger ed services division. Um, and we're really tasked with providing administrative services, resources and policy support to the school site teams. In support of their college readiness, college access and college and career pathways programming. I am so thrilled um to have this opportunity to speak about the amazing work. That this phenomenal group of educators does with our students each and every day. Our school counselors follow the ASCA model, uh the American Association of School Counselors. And they are absolutely first and foremost student advocates. And quite often are uniquely placed to be able to solely focus on the needs of students, right? They're not school administrators who have to worry about the adults in the building as well. They really are here for the kids. Um, they are absolutely uniquely trained to be able to maximize high school graduation and college access for all students. And to provide emotional and. And to provide emotional and academic support. And I really um am thrilled to be able to, at this point, turn the presentation over. To some of our amazing counselors so that you can hear from their voices about their work and what they do. So I think we're we'll turn it over at this point to um Garth Flint and Molly Quoto.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Garth Flint and I'm a middle school counselor at Helms Middle School. And um, I'm I'm really honored to be a part of this meeting tonight. There's just been a lot of great information that's been shared and some of the questions, just phenomenal questions. Um, I do wanna make one, a couple of acknowledgements. The first one is uh how important it is uh for our CSOs. Um, they're such an integral part of the school community and um really, really do an amazing job in in. In uh keeping our environment safe and and working with our students. So I I definitely wanted to acknowledge how important they are at the site level and at the district level. Um, secondly, also wanted to really speak to uh the team of counselors I get to work with. Uh, at the site level and at the district level, just amazing, amazing people. Who uh are so invested in our students and their wellbeing and their their success uh all over. So I'm really honored to be a part of their team. And you know, we we work uh monthly together and we talk about best practices. And uh share, share what we're doing at at each of our sites, which is really just an amazing experience. Um, at the middle school level, you know, I I like to uh. We talk about how we, how we work with students. Um, especially at our site, you know, we look at it as as if it was like a triangle. And you know, we we work with students, you know, in academic, academic areas, social, emotional and college and career. And within that centralized triangle, um, we do a lot of backend hidden work that is not often seen uh by a lot of people. And one of those things is that we do is we really try to build relationships. Um, we're working hard to build these relationships so students feel connected to the school. They feel connected to their teachers. They feel connected to the curriculum and they feel successful. And what what we know is is that if we're able to really foster and build those relationships, that they do extremely well at the high school level. Um, so with with saying that, it's also equally important to realize how important it is to have elementary school counselors. Because by having elementary school counselors who come in, you know, provide uh support to those to those elementary students. And then those students make it to our level and we work with them and then they're off to high school. So having those those elementary school counselors, those middle school counselors and obviously high school counselors is extremely important at all levels. Um, caseloads are are high and it it's really important to to look at that closely. Because we want to be able to serve as many students as we possibly can. Um, the recommendation is is two hundred and fifty students. Um, right now, we're we're currently, you know, a above that. And so, you know, we're really looking to to see if we can increase that support. And and uh, you know, have have a shift in in how we work with students by having more counselors. Which will really help with uh the academics, which will help with uh students, you know, having good choices for for college and career. So with that said, you know, I just wanna say that a lot of the work that we do. Um, is is not really measured in in a test that, you know, like teachers can give a student a test. You know, it's it's over a lifetime. And um, you know, we 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 don't often see the the short term impact. But we know that the impact is over a a long term uh si- situation. So um, I I really feel that's that's we are extremely important within that environment.
Thanks so much, Mr. Flint, for giving us um a a glimpse into the world of our middle school school counselors. Um, Ms. Kudo, are you ready to speak about high school counselors?
Will do. Um, hi, everyone. I'm Molly Kudo. I'm one of the two counselors at Hercules High School. Uh, this is my eighth year um as a counselor and at Hercules. Uh, my co-counselor Eric has, this is his sixth year, so we have a really nice working relationship and teamwork. Um, I know I I can speak about our um duties in general. But I wanted to just instead sort of talk about, I just jotted down a few things um that we have on the plan. Um, for when we go back in the spring, next week, next Monday. Um, so short list of things we have to do. Um, we're doing course selections for next year um for all eight hundred of our students. By the way, Hercules has the lowest caseload in the district um with four hundred counselor, uh four hundred students to one counselor. So at Hercules, with the lowest counselor ration ratio, here's the things just top of my head that I need to do um as soon as we get back in person. Course selections are happening right now. About eighty percent of our students completed them, twenty percent didn't. And so um those twenty percent of students, um Eric and I need to go in and choose their classes for them for next year. Um, individually, individual. And then in addition, we need to look at all the eighty percent who did choose their classes and make sure they chose appropriate classes for their level. Which means like if they already finished geometry, I need to make sure they chose algebra two and not pre-calculus or something. So once again, that's individual students one by one. Um, we do local review, which means that um and we do this all year long. Um, we were looking at who can graduate, who's on track to graduate, who's failing or not failing, who's got Ds that need to be made up. Um, who might need summer school of the seniors, who might need to go to adult ed. Um, we do F notices at the end of the year to make sure that senior families know what's happening. Um, we send letters and do calls to families about students who may or may not be on track to graduate. Um, while this is happening, we're planning for summer school. Really excited that we're able to offer an a robust summer school for our students um at each site. Really stoked about that. We have a lot of students, as I'm sure everybody can guess, who kind of fell off the radar this year. And really hoping to grab them back in um for summer school. So we're actively involved in the planning of summer school. We're actively involved in the graduation planning because we get to have a graduation on our field this year, which is pretty fantastic. Um, so we're having both meetings about that. And then traditionally, Eric and I call the names of our graduation, which is really an exciting piece of our job. Um, so anyway, we're really active in that with Contra Costa College. We have a wonderful um uh relationship with them. And we've been doing monthly uh workshops for our seniors who are gonna go to Contra Costa College. Um, or any other community college in the fall. But we're also working with Contra Costa College on concurrent enrollment. Um, I'm talking really fast because this is a lot I get. Um, but this is just and I a picture into what's going on for us right now. Um, we also have Edgenuity, which is our um our, uh, oh my God, the word escapes me. Our credit recovery program, it's an online credit recovery program for students who've got Ds or Fs ever before. For them to make up those credits. Um, as Dr. Huey said, we um, our aim is really to get every single student to graduate high school with the option of going to college if they want to. Any college, Contra Costa in in four years. So um, we actively try and work with students from ninth grade on who've gotten Ds or Fs and enroll them in credit recovery. Um, Eric and I are the teachers of credit recovery. We have ninety three students right now who are enrolled in a course that they're making up. Um, Eric and I grade their assignments. We unlock all their exams. When they finish, we nag them to work on it. When they finish, we um print their transcript. We enter it into their Power School transcript so that their Power School is up to date. Um, and all throughout the year, we're looking for students who've got a DNF and haven't made it up yet and enrolling all throughout the year. Um, end of year stuff, all the awards that happens, the seal of by literacy, um, the California Scholarship Federation, the decision day. Um, you know, that's the day that seniors say where they're gonna go. We like to have a big celebration to celebrate the students who are going somewhere after high school. Um, honor grads, these are all things that high school counselors are um actively uh figuring out. Um, and then finally, we do a big senior survey so we can ask every single student where they're going after high school. What um, what helped them in high school? Did they ever have contact with their counselors? If so, was it positive or negative? A lot of questions like that. We we work with Web Grants, which is the California's um Student Aid Commission. For um Cash for College Nights in the fall and the spring. And at the end of the year, we have to mark who's graduated. Um, those are literally that list was today. I sat down and said, oh my God, what do I have to do right now? So that's my list of what I have to do right now. Um, what I would love to say is that when I go back in person next Monday, I'm gonna be available for all the mental health and social emotional needs. And as you can plainly see, I'm not. Um, I won't have time for social, emotional and um and mental health. Uh, except as it relates to all of that big list. And the truth is, it does relate. Anytime I have a student sitting in front of me and I'm talking to them about a D or an F that they got. It comes out that, oh, well, my dad this or that, or my sister's been sick. Or, you know, I had a family member really sick with COVID and I wasn't able. So mental health and social emotional comes in in every single conversation, truly. As Garth mentioned, that's part of the relationship building that we do all day, every day, even while we're doing all this paperwork-y meeting stuff. Um, and that's the heart of it and that's what we all love so much and that's why we all got into counseling. Um, again, I'll just reiterate that at Hercules, we have the lowest uh caseload in the district, which is four hundred students each. Um, nine through twelfth grade. So love my job, love this team, love the teamwork and the support we're getting, particularly this year. And really appreciate the opportunity to speak about our jobs.
Thank you so much, Molly. Um, next we'll be hearing from Teresa Pamanton, who is serving as our district's lead counselor.
Evening, everyone. Thank you, trustees, um, district leaders and attendees um for giving us this opportunity to speak on behalf of all the counselors. So I just wanted to kind of share a little bit more of a background regarding our counselor to student ratio. And I know we always talk about, you know, ASCA's recommended two hundred fifty to one. So um with our high schools, for example, at Pinole, we have um a hundred or a thousand two hundred and eighty-five. And this data was collected in April first of twenty twenty-one. So we actually currently have two counselors for that campus. Um, sixty-seven percent of our students we've um received free reduced lunch. And our um counselor to student ratio is basically six forty-three to one counselor. At El Surito, we have fifteen thirty-three, which we have two point eight counselors on campus. And it brings it down to about five hundred forty-eight to one counselor. Deanza, they have three counselors, which is four hundred sixty-one to one. Again, that's still over, are recommended to fifty to one counselor. And Vista and Middle College, we have one counselor for those two campuses. Um, so we have a total of um four hundred and three students per counselor. So uh we have one counselor, which is Ms. Martinez there. Um, Hercules, which we heard from Molly, um, they are at four hundred per uh counselor. And Richmond High, we have four counselors, which brings it to three seventy-seven students per one counselor. Kennedy High School, we have eight hundred forty-five current enrolled students, two hundred and eighty-two per one counselor. And if you look at it, I mean, we really have a high uh need population with eighty-one percent receiving free reduced lunch. Greenwood Academy, we have a hundred and ninety-five stu- uh students, two counselors and a ninety-eight to one. And keep in mind, Greenwood, um, Sylvester Greenwood is an alternative um school. Uh, for middle school. There you go. For middle school, we currently have Crespi at three ninety-nine. So we have three hundred and ninety-nine students per counselor. We only have one counselor there. And I believe um she is now our current counselor for uh our African-American uh department. So we currently don't have any um counselor at Crespi that I know of. Um, Kermatso, we have seven hundred twenty-four students with two counselors and three hundred sixty-two per caseload. Hercules Middle is two counselors for six hundred twenty students, which is three hundred and ten per counselor. We have Holmes Middle School for seven hundred and eighty-two total students, three counselors. Again, eighty-eight percent receiving free reduced lunch for two hundred and fifty-one students per counselor. Pinole is at four forty-nine, two counselors, two hundred twenty-five students per counselor. And Dejawn is at four twenty-one with two hundred and eleven students per counselor. The rest of our elementary schools, we don't have any counselors. Um, it is, you know, with other districts, they definitely do need a counselor for the elementary school. To just basically start guiding them, providing the the support that they need. Because as we've got them in middle school, sometimes it's it's a little too late and it's good to start early. So um, I'm just speaking of in behalf of all of our counselors and counseling team that they do a pretty good job. Um, they're trying their best. And um, I was a counselor before at uh Deanza High School before I uh I got into my district uh level of work. And I was at Deanza and it does make a difference when I started off at Deanza with really a small caseload. We were able to see the students, we were able to provide the services until we just started building more on uh the students. And we just kept on having more students and less counselors per caseload. So, thank you. Back to Dr. Huey.
Thanks so much, Teresa. So I also wanted to provide um a few up to date, um, really just up to the minute numbers. Um, in terms of what staffing will look like for spring in person. Um, as the staff survey responses are coming back, this is our, how we are sitting currently. We had thirty-five um surveys go out to school counseling staff. Um, thirty-one respondents have completed that survey. And so far, we know that fifteen of our school counselors will be volunteering to return um in person to provide in-person services. Twelve respondents will be continuing uh to provide services remotely. Three folks are undecided and we're still waiting on responses from four of our school counselors. And now I would like to turn it over to uh Ms. Erica Martinez, who will speak a little bit about the impact of school counselors. Especially at our alternative school sites.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ms. Martinez. I'm the counselor. I'm split between middle, college, high school and Vista. So I know that Greenwood is also considered alternative ed, but I've never worked there, so I can't speak to what their tasks are. Um, but I will say, being at both two smaller sites, um, I'm sixty percent at middle college and forty percent at Vista. Um, being there part-time really affects my ability to build relationships at Vista. But with middle college, because I'm there sixty percent overwhelmingly more of the time. Um, I have a, I have a strong rapport built with most of the students, especially the seniors this year. I've had to do online Zoom meetings for everything possible, college applications. I met with sixty-nine of this, all sixty-nine seniors to walk them through college applications this year. I did thirty-some meetings with the ones that hadn't filed for financial aid. Um. There's fewer issues if you have a better relationship with your students and you're able to increase your graduation rates. Because you're able to monitor their transcripts and their grades much more closely. I can speak to that just from middle college alone. Um, I monitor their transcripts every semester because I have to do master scheduling twice a year. In fact, I'm in the throes of that right now, which was part of the thing I put in the chat was. I have office hours after this meeting to talk to my students about choice sheets, which is gonna be running later into the evening. And it'll be most of the week that I'm meeting with them. Um, again, like I, on the screen, it says I'm able to monitor their progress more closely. If they are failing a class in in a quarter, I can try to help get them a one-on-one tutor at this point. Um, I have a strong relationship with most of my students, especially when they become seniors, because they know that they're gonna need my help. Um, but this also lends to what Molly and Garth had talked about, which was building that rapport with students. You know, I've had quite a few of them come and talk to me about serious family issues or if they've been abused or sexually assaulted, those types of things. So those are all heavy, heavy con- con- heavy, heavy topics to talk about with a uh, an educator. So it's hard to do that when we're doing this all online, but in person, it's the same, you know, I'm I'm the same way with them that I am online, that I am in person. So they feel very comfortable and and wanna tell me what's happening in their lives. And my whole thesis, when I was in my master's program, was if students are not doing well socially and emotionally, they're not gonna do well academically. Because how can they focus on school when they have a lot of other stuff going on at home, especially right now, because they can't leave home? Um, so we don't have a health center at uh middle college. And we have a healthcare provider, like a therapist at Vista, but we use the Wright Institute, which is a UC Berkeley grad program. For mental health services for middle college students. I guess before I got there, so a little background, I've been at middle college since twenty eighteen nineteen. Um, they haven't had a health van there for the past few years that I've been there. So I don't know what the, what the status is with that, but they don't have access to those things that all the other comprehensive high schools have or had. Um, it's also difficult because I have to show them how to do everything for CCC. Meaning for middle college and Vista, I have to walk students through the application, how they need to register for classes. Um, there's just a lot of context that goes into showing them all of those things. And I don't have access to the college systems because I'm not a, I'm not a, an employee for the college. So walking them through all those things can take a lot of time, which isn't a problem. But if it's just me and I have, you know, four hundred and something on my caseload, it's almost impossible. it's almost impossible for me to get, make sure that I reach all of them. So just to give you a little background about what I do, both my sites do not have assistant principals. I don't believe Greenwood does either. So things like master scheduling, it's all on me. I have to create the choice sheet, I have to collect the data, I have to start building the schedule, but for middle college, it's not just high school classes, obviously. I have to start planning for their college classes. So it takes me about a week to get all three hundred schedules made, and then I have to send it out to them and then have another presentation on how to do registration, because they always forget. Vista only has me one and a half days, so it's a little harder to build rapport with them, but currently, I'm teaching a college and career readiness class for the seniors at Vista, so I have about a handful that I'm really close to, where they they ask me for letters of recommendation. They may need help registering for a college class, so I'm able to do all of those things, which is great. What I do want to stress is that our students at middle college and Vista are just are going through the same types of issues that students at a comprehensive school are going through as well. We just don't always have that extra support. Again, staff at middle college is ten teachers, me, the principal, and the office manager, so thirteen people to help three hundred and eighty or two hundred and eighty-nine students. And Vista has no assistant principal as well. It's Eda, it's Ms. McCormick, the principal, the office manager, the lead teacher, and a handful of teachers. So the counselor in both those positions takes on a lot of responsibilities, because they're the only other person, part of the admin team that can help. I feel that it's kind of doing Vista a disservice to have me there one-point-five days. That doesn't really help. Those students come onto campus once a week. So when we do the return for Vista next week, it's basically Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. They never have a class more than fifteen students, because it's a small site. It it's just difficult, even in person, because at middle college, I'm there, but this I can't, you know, I'm right around the corner from Vista, but I can't connect with them the same way that I can with middle college, because again, Vista students are only on campus once a week. So, speaking to plans to return for spring for middle college, we end the semester, May twenty-second is our graduation. We're going to have about a month of spring intervention, and I'm going to show up Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, four to six, to to be support for the students that need it. So again, we have to go based on what the college allows us to do on their campus, because it's not ours. There's just a lot of stuff that really goes into being a counselor, and I can't really speak to Greenwood. I know they have two counselors, and they have the smallest caseload of all of us, but those students are high needs, too. A lot of them are very credit deficient. Vista students, not so much, because they can't come in with credit deficiencies. If we're going to take them in middle college, if they are on academic probation and they don't show improvement, we have to boot them back to their resident school. So it just, I I'm torn, because I love both my sites, but I'm also on different calendars. So the time off that you guys had last week is the district. We didn't get that. I got the week before. You guys get president's week off. We don't get that at middle college, so I'm still working, even though Vista's off. I start back sooner, I end sooner for middle college, but I'm also, so I have to somehow figure out how to shave off ten working days from middle college and Vista, because I'm working too many days over my calendar days. So it's, I would prefer to just be at one site, but again, that's a money issue, but so all that to say, it's a hard job. I love what I do. Clearly, I do, because I'm going to host office hours as soon as this meeting's over with my students, and I'm going to do that the remainder of the week, because choice sheets went out, so they don't know how to answer them, answer all the questions, because they have a lot of questions themselves. So I have to make sure that I'm available to them after the school day is over, and that includes tutoring. Tutoring, we offer Monday through Friday. Actually, we offer it Monday through Saturday, and I supervise Saturday tutoring as well. So there's a lot going on, and Molly just talked about graduation, like we now, we're the first ones in the district to graduate at middle college, because our graduation date is May twenty-second. So we have literally a little bit over five weeks, and we're going to be done. So it's it's a little bit of a stressful job, knowing I have two very separate sites, and how do I service needs for all of those students at one time? It's it's pretty difficult. So hopefully, that gave you a better idea of what I do as a counselor for both those sites, and hopefully we can have more counselors added, so that Vista students and middle college students get the full extent of a counselor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erica. I appreciate you waiting and and being able to be here tonight, even though you're headed into office hours with your very lucky students. All right. I think next, we're going to hear from Ms. Ross.
Yeah. So Allison, I set you up for a lot of clicking. Thank you, or maybe Teresa, but thank you very much. So I just I just want to take a moment to really thank you all for having us here tonight, and and thank you to Allison and Teresa for setting setting all this up so well. I I love my co-counselors. I am very impressed at their professionalism. I'm very impressed at the the work that they are capable of doing, and I would love for all of the district to see that work really come to fruition with a little bit more support. I want to give some context to, you know, returning in the spring. There was a good question in the in the comments, and just want to put out there that we do have some folks coming back, but but for for me, and thinking about coming back, I I know that with a six hundred fifty-person caseload at Pinole Valley High School, that I wouldn't even be able to see students if I were there in person, because even if we were in a normal school year, I would have to be doing so much of my work electronically to just get all of the work done with all of the students I have right now. And I love seeing students. So part of what I'm doing here is really making the case for, you know, us to be able to do the jobs that that I think this group of people are really amazing at. I also want to just make the point that this is like, I think, the right time to be focusing on school counseling and other mental health-related mental health, school-based mental health providers. Because we're in this moment where not only are we in this pandemic, right? But we shut down, as we all know, two weeks after some significant budgeting cuts that impacted the counselor caseload going, but impacted a lot of things in our district also that support students. And, you know, we're in this moment where we've taken away the cops that are in our schools, which made sense, made sense for budget, made sense for some of the social justice issues in the area, but we haven't really replaced that with anyone. And we've had these conversations about CSOs and how great it would be to increase those. We're also having conversations, you know, about how school counselors could really replace some of those issues as well. And then here we are with its with all this money coming in from Biden, and so so we're really hoping that in the context of this, we can answer any questions about how school counselors can kind of fill this role. So this slide is about some of the impacts that school counselors do have, based on research. And so, and also based on just our experiences. So I'm a high school counselor, and I, a couple of years back, I guess, maybe three or four years back now, I helped initiate our care team at our school. And what we found is that we have so many students coming into our care team. And to give you a sense, we've talked some in a lot of these meetings about the the triangle of interventions, where you have tier one at the bottom, tier two in the middle, and tier one at the top. Other way around, tier one at the bottom, tier two, and then tier three at the top, with the idea that the tier three, the students who require tier three interventions are the ones where it's like you've got to do a one-on-one, you do this intensive intervention. Tier two is like you're doing these group interventions, so you know, you know that there's a group of students who needs a little bit more support. You're going to go in proactively, preventatively, and go support that group of students. Tier one is this awesome place where you can go in and and talk about these things with all of the parents for a certain grade, you know, or you can talk to the whole school about all of these things. And ideally, school counselors are spending all its time focusing on on tier one and tier two, so that the number of students who come to our care team up at that tier three level is small. Well, unfortunately, because we have so few resources that we are able to commit to that tier one and tier two places, we have a lot of students coming into this tier three, and we're really lucky, as LaShante Smith told us before, that, you know, we have some Seneca support that's spring for mental health, because we historically have had a lot of students coming into these care team meetings, and we actually haven't had any therapists to be able to give them to. We've had no one to offer, and so we got giddy about the fact that we had Seneca referrals to make. We would love to have therapists in-house, but we, but anything that we can do to provide mental health support, we we would love to do that. And so we help facilitate those things, and that's one of the things that we do. We'd like to facilitate fewer students getting to the care team level, and we'd also like to support that care team in a way that actually gets students access to resource, so we don't have over a hundred students as it was a couple of years ago and last year, waiting. There's a lot of data that shows that school counselors impact many things, other than just whether students get to this tier three need. So specifically, we've seen in data, and if you if you have this presentation after the fact, you'll actually be able to click on some of these links, and you can go to the data that shows some of it, so we're not going to do that here. But just so you know, that is in, that that's embedded in this presentation, so you know, we're speaking off of real facts. So the data shows that that school counselors actually, and especially decreasing them to the two hundred fifty ratio. The reason that's there is because the data has shown that that is actually the ratio where we have the most improved attendance rates. We have the most lowered suspension, expulsion, and discipline. We have the most improved academic achievement, and I'm going to show you some examples of what that can look like in a slide up ahead. We improve graduation rates. There's some, there's also some some information about that that I'll speak to in a moment. And we improve health outcomes, specifically for this committee focused on school climate and safety. We help improve school safety. If you can imagine a student in a classroom who's struggling, right? So we already have these large class sizes, and we're hoping that, you know, in conjunction with decreasing the counselor caseloads, we also have the ability to reduce the case, the class sizes as well, because when you think about the number of students who were in a classroom, if one of them is having a behavioral, some behavioral situation coming out, that behavior is coming from a need. That need is something that can't necessarily be addressed in a thirty-nine-person classroom. It might be a little bit better addressed in a thirty-six-person classroom, but that's still thirty-six students. And then if one, if they can just get a chance for that student to come out of the class and get a little moment to sort of relax with the counselor, to get a a chance to talk over some things with the counselor, we might be able to reduce that discipline, the discipline that might follow if that student's needs doesn't get met. We help the teacher out with the learning with the rest of the classroom by being able to identify that. And so you can imagine how going all the way back to elementary school, this could have a real impact over time preventatively for a lot of these measures that we really care about as a district. There have also been some counseling interventions, as you can see at the bottom, and there's a there's an enjoyable little cartoon there for folks, while I save this last note here, which is that having school counselors, even at the elementary school level, there is evidence that 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 having that intervention then can actually decrease the high school dropout rate by half. So in a district that they looked at, you know, it went from sixteen percent dropout to eight percent dropout in their high school levels, with the only change in those students being that they had elementary school interventions, which is pretty impressive, and I think is is pretty good evidence for a district. And yeah, counselors are struggling hard right now. We we love our jobs. We are struggling with the where we're at right now. So equity is a big topic. It's I I it's something that I is my moral compass that I sort of guide myself by, my professional compass, and it's something that's come up a lot in this district recently, right? So what we know is that is that school counselors, yes, have an impact on all of our students, but what we also know is that having a trusted adult that students can connect with in their academic experience, and by that, I mean in their schools. Having a trusted adult is really one of the biggest identifiers of whether students succeed all the way throughout. And so what we know is that students of color, students from low-income families, benefit benefit from having more access to school counselors, who are more often than not that trusted adult, especially when the caseloads are lower. So I've noticed as our caseload at Pinole Valley High School has climbed from three eighty to four to four twenty to, you know, to six fifty, that I've had fewer of those one-on-one connections, which is, I think, what our students need to succeed. Please note that we actually, at Pinole Valley High School, gained a third counselor in two thousand seventeen, and when that happened, and I'll show you this on a graph in a moment, the percentage of students who are eligible or close to eligible for four-year schools has remained higher than sixty percent since we had that third counselor, and before that, it never went over sixty percent. One of the things school counselors do, in addition, again, to those tier two and in tier three supports, where we're individually working with students, is these are these broad tier one interventions, and one of those things is structurally looking at the schedule and saying, okay, well, if we did, if we did want to adjust the number of students who are four-year college-eligible in math, which has historically been an equity issue in our district, then let's see what we can do. And so we made some structural changes. We advocated for geometry to be first. We, you can just sort of go through these, Allison. Yeah. So we really advocated hard to keep an algebra two trig equivalent course. We even, you know, as we were getting pushed back from the district, and and we were able to do that, we encouraged our school to increase probability statistic. We enrolled our seniors in math and created an opt-out instead of an opt-in, and we really did a good job of looking at transcripts and making sure that students were placed adequately, because whether students are placed in the right classes is is a huge equity issue, because it it make it it makes the difference between whether there's this extra barrier for students to get to college or not, and that's the same thing with that algebra two trig course, all that stuff. We're trying to decrease those barriers, and we look at those fine details through transcripts. So I just want to make this really clear about the kind of impact that school counselors can have. Okay, and this is just one example. There are thousands of graphs out there that can show you this, but this is real data from our district. So if you can look at two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, these are the, so these, this, this is a picture of all of the seniors at Pinole Valley High School, and whether they were in blue eligible for four-year school in the math area, right? So A through G math level. Or if they weren't eligible in the math component for four-year school, and that would be in the yellow. So there's a huge difference from two thousand sixteen to seventeen to two thousand twenty to twenty-one, and I want to describe what happened. So in two thousand seventeen, as I mentioned, we hired a third counselor. Okay, just by adding one more counselor, by decreasing the counselor caseload and giving us more access individually to transcripts and more access individually to students, we were able to in increase the eligibility of our seniors in math for four-year college by fourteen percent. Then we didn't have any change. We had, didn't do any interventions that were special, other than, you know, what we'd been doing there before, and then we said, we did this math intervention that we mentioned on that slide before. Instantaneously, in one year, with that math intervention, our seniors became fifteen percent higher eligible in math for four-year schools, and that success has continued into this year, where eighty-four percent of our seniors right now are eligible for four-year college in math. Now, we have work to do in English, so this is not saying that that all, you know, eighty-four percent of our students are four-year eligible in math, but we were given a directive about, you know, in two thousand seventeen from Superintendent Duffy to say, bring up your, bring up your four-year eligibility to eighty percent, and we said, okay, we'll try. And and we managed to do it in math, and so this is what counselors can do when we are given the resources to do it. And then we were just take, one counselor was taken away from Pinole Valley High School, so I am a little scared to see where the data goes next year, but also really hopeful at all of the things I've heard from the board and the district. So thank you so much for for listening to all of us today.
Thank you, Jessica, and before we turn it over to our trustees, I just want to say thank you to all of the counselors who have hung in here for three hours for this evening's meeting outside of their, out of your normal workday. We really appreciate you being available to speak today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you to all the counselors, to all those who have given the presentation. And at this time, we'll go to Trustee Smith Foles for a question.
Trustee Christian, we're probably going to have to extend to about maybe seven thirty?
Yes, it is. Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. I actually, and this is kudos to you guys, I don't have any questions. This is great. This is a great presentation. I appreciate it. I appreciate how thorough it was. I do have a lot of comments, but I do not have any questions. So, Trustee Christian, no questions, but lots of comments.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Smith Foles. I have a question. And 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 I guess it's basically, well, I'm gonna ask it this way, how many African-American counselors do we have on staff?
I have an answer to that question off of the back of the envelope calculation, and And Allison and Teresa, if you're afraid to throw it in, but I'm going to give a percentage instead of a number. And what I calculated completely without people identifying for themselves, Claire. This is off the napkin is thirty one percent black, thirty five percent white, nineteen percent Latinx and sixteen percent Asian descent. Roughly.
Okay. And and I guess the other part will be. You know, ba- you know, based on, you know, everything has, you know, what's been said. And I guess, let me ask this question is before we went into the pandemic. We already had issues with the counseling aspect before we even ever heard about a pandemic.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, I I'll say the other part for my comments. All right, do we have any public comments?
We do have some hands raised. And I'm sure a couple more come up. So we'll start with Amy Lynn. You may unmute.
Hi, thank you. I'm a mom at Harding of twins and I just wanted to throw my support for the school counselors. My students did TK at Stige School. And we had an experience with a school counselor there after one of my kids had. An interaction with another student that. Required some teacher, principal and district intervention. And it was decided that to help my student through that, they would see a school counselor. That was set up for a once a week visit. And the help that my student received was invaluable. And we saw an immediate result in her easing back into the classroom after the incident. With the other student and being able to reconcile with that other student. Simply because of that interaction. There was an instance where I had dropped my kid off at the school counselor meeting that happened once a week. And there was a lockdown that went on and I had just dropped my student off at the school counselor. My other student went into their classroom and I was pulled into a random classroom to get out of the way. One of my students who was in their own classroom had a way harder time. My student who was with the school counselor barely knew that anything had happened. That counselor held her emotionally in a way that helped them so very much. So I have seen firsthand what the school counselors can do with the young kids. My kids are in elementary. I'm incredibly grateful for that support. And we need more of it. We need more school counselors so that all kids can get the support that they need. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Moran.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I am a parent. And resident and teacher at Hercules Middle. I'm going to actually go under time today. Thank you, counselors, for your dedication and yours. Your your hard work and your presentation today. What I want to say is I want to really challenge us all to really, if you're not a school counselor, you don't actually know what they do. And you don't actually know what they can do. You think you know, because we went to high school. But what I learned is that school counselors are not the guidance counselors that I grew up with. If you can't imagine what an elementary counselor would be doing, that's not because there's not something important for them to do. It's because we don't have the conception of it. And if you you haven't seen your counselor doing those amazing things at your site, it's because their caseload is too big. And so all they're doing is fighting fires all the time. All they're doing is that top surface level. So we really need to change the paradigm. Rather than let's figure out how we can make it work with the meager funds we have. We need to push at every level to increase school funding so that it works the way it should work. So that works the way that actually works. And I like the slogan Smith Foles, bring back better. All right. I said I quit early, so I gotta stop now.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Kenneth Jones.
Thank you for the opportunity. As a school counselor who happens to be black, I can relate to the question that you asked. And because it's very important for kids to see people who look like them, who know how to navigate situations in schools. I try to make sure I go into classrooms. As a former teacher, I know about classroom management. I make sure I offer to help kids or I make sure I make eye contact with them. So that they can see that I will remember them. And that we can have another conversation later on. But the point I want to make is. They dilute my effectiveness by making me do too much discipline. I can't. Write out suspension notices for somebody that I want to talk to me and tell me what the problems, what the issues are truthfully. So the district down has to figure out what do they want? Do they want another dean? Or do they want a counselor to help? The kids socially and academically. And I'm going to go over for a minute, but I have to do five oh four, have to set up five oh four meetings. I have to adjust my schedule with other people's schedules. That takes up a lot of time. I have to call SSTs. I try to go into classes and do career exploration with kids. So I'm doing so many things. That almost delegitimizes me because I'm trying to sell myself as a person, as an adult, that you should be able to relate to. That you, to who will listen to you, who will help you. Now. Michael Jordan came along, but there was people counselors like Jones who were here before him. The white kids like me too. The brown kids like me because they know I'm going to talk to them and I'm going to try to help them. But the district has to make sure it knows and it directs, it directs its administrators. To use the counselors in a way that will be beneficial to students, especially students of color, young boys. Who need to have someone they can believe in and have confidence in. And you will decrease the referral rates. If you invest time in people, not just somebody sitting behind the desk. It's human to human proactive contact is what it is. Thank you for for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next one is Joseph Glazer.
Hi, thank you. Joseph Glazer, history teacher at Hercules Middle. So thank you for the wonderful presentation, every, all the presenters. Even though I loved my counselors when I was in school, particularly my high school counselor. I wish you were all my counselors when I was in school. Your comments were so inspiring. Mr. Jones, you know, who just spoke, that was incredible. All of you were amazing, very, very inspiring way to spend my early evening. So. We work magic as educators every day. But it doesn't happen by magic. We need the numbers to do what we need to do. We need. You know, just reiterate lower counselor caseloads, increasing the number of counselors on our campuses. I've had a situation, many situations where I've had students disrupting class, you know, having difficult days. And I just call a counselor because I have a good relationship with them. And I say, oh, hey, Miss so and so, you know, can you take, can you talk to so and so for a few minutes? You know, not a write a referral, but just saying them on a pass, can you just talk to them? And sometimes they had the chance to do that and sometimes they couldn't because they just had too much to deal with. And, you know, I want to be able to do that to just give a kid a break instead of, you know, having it to be a referral all the time. And sometimes that's enough. And this can prevent problems happening, further problems happening down the road. Hiring more counselors and also teachers having lower class sizes will keep more students in the district. Because one of the parents' main reasons they go to charters and private schools is because safety issues, behavior issues. And higher class sizes and counselor caseloads there are too high. So it's going to be an investment in our financial future of this district. Sometimes you have to spend money to actually make progress and to save money down the road. So the more we spend now to do the staffing that we need on all these issues. CSOs, counselors, teachers, behavior specialists, restorative justice, we're going to save the problems happening down the road. An ounce of prevention is better than a pound of cure. I hope I said that saying right.
And our last public speaker is Adam Brown.
I want to say, my name is Adam Brown. Once again, I am a counselor at Penole Valley High. I used to be a counselor at Crispy Middle School. I want to say that I've worked both levels of. Of counseling. And I want to say that counseling at the middle school. You don't do, you don't get the chance to do a lot of actual counseling. Due to the fact that ninety percent of what you're doing, oh, actually, over ninety percent of what you're doing is a discipline. Seeing referrals and handling referrals, writing ups, doing the paperwork for suspensions and things of that nature. And that takes up the majority of your time. And so a lot of times that you don't get. The chance to do the social emotional things. You have to kind of squeeze it in. It's like every now and again, it's like I had it. My last couple of years, I wasn't able to do really too much of any of that. But the years prior to that, when we had three counselors on there, where my caseload was lower. I was able to see students more on a social emotional, able to do career fairs, college fairs and things of that nature. But. One thing definitely is for sure is that. Students, uh, coming across as like out on both levels, students need that social emotional support. And it has been diminished over time, not only on the middle school level, but on the high school level. And the students really need that, especially coming out of this COVID. And they need it desperately and to not have the school counselors to facilitate that is, I think, is unconscionable. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Trustee Christian, that was the last public comment.
Okay, thank you. Now we go into the comment session, trustee Smith Fole.
So Ms. Huey, is there any way for you to put the slide deck back up real quick? And I just want the the two slides that talked about the caseloads. So when we look at this, when we look at this slide, that's shameful. It's absolutely just disheartening, but it's also. It's shameful. It's shameful that we have people who are doing six hundred and forty three to one. When the best number, the or the least number is two fifty to one. So it's just, it's absolutely just, it's not okay. It's shameful. It's not okay. It's not something that we need to continue. If you look at the second one. The fact that Stuart, Montalban, Verdi, Perrys and Miravista don't have anyone. If that's if I'm reading this correctly, that's not just shameful, but that's. Neglectful of these kids. These are middle school kids. Every other middle school kid in the district has this, but these. Schools don't. And I don't understand that. And that's not okay. That's not looking through any kind of equity lens. That's not looking through any kind of. We're talking about race and equity or justice or anything like that, that we can't justify that. We can't justify that these schools that have middle school students, middle school age students don't have a counselor when other middle schools have access to one. That's not okay. We do need more counselors. We all know that we need more counselors, but we also need to understand that representation matters. We had Mr. Jones that came on and said that representation of our students matter. We all know that representation matters. So we need not only more counselors, we need more male counselors, we need more black counselors, we need more people of color, we need more bilingual counselors. We need our students to be able to see themselves and the people who are standing in front of them. I don't even think that this is an ask. I think that is a have to. I don't, there's some things that you shouldn't have to ask for and the fact that we have counseling. Numbers and the ratios are so far askew. I just don't see how we're able to. Look at ourselves. Like I don't see, I just, it's, it's almost. It's dumbfounding. It's silence. I don't, I don't understand. Like I'm almost at a loss of words to see the numbers. Of how much we're putting on counselors to be able to do and we're not providing them the resources to do it. So. For me, I've always been one that turns lemons to lemonade. So when someone says I'm stubborn, I say it stick to itness. So I am going to be very stubborn about this. Those numbers have to come down. We have to get more counselors in these schools. We have, if we are racially. Just and we're trying to be equity focused, we can't do that and have slides with those numbers on it. It doesn't compute. It's not making sense. We can't say that we're focusing on black and brown children and children who are economically deprived and children who have social emotional needs. And have a slide with numbers like that. When I was looking at the slide, I think only two schools were under the two fifty and they were barely under the two fifty. Like barely under the two fifty, even though schools still needed more help because they still have students that fall in the critical need section. That we have as a matrix. Our students need help and if we are not providing that help, we are doing a disservice. We're doing a disservice. And one way to start with that is with our counselors. So Dr. Wool, my direction is to pull the numbers down. Whatever you have to do, whatever, wherever you have to pull from, whatever magic is in your economic database, pull those numbers down. It can't look like this next year. It needs to pull the numbers down now and pull them down as quickly and as fast as you can. Trustee Christian, I could say more and I probably will. But right now, in the lieu of time, I'm just going to say I am stubborn about this. Numbers must come down and I will say it all the time. So if you don't want to hear my lovely voice, Dr. Wool, pull the numbers down. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Smith Fole. And I just want to, you know, echo the same, same thing is that we have a lot of work to do. With that being said, you know, before we went into COVID, we we already had these issues. And then our middle, our elementary school kids are not being serviced and, you know. And then our middle school kids barely being serviced and then, you know, then high school. You know, just knowing from a high school setting demands a lot of needs too. And so if we invest into. Our elementary schools, which is the foundation to everything. And if we can help our young people to go to the next level. That they can see themselves achieving their goals and life achieving, knowing who they are as a person. If we could help them at the foundational level, then we will be helping them when they get to middle school. And and as well as getting to high school. And so, so yeah, we have to look at how we can get more money, more grants, more whatever it is. How are we gonna engineer? This, but a lot, a lot does have to happen, you know, and, you know. COVID just actually just opens everything up. Wow, you know, here we are. So either we step to the plate to do better or we not going to do better. So we just have a decision, you know, to make. So. And I want to thank all the presenters. From the beginning, all the way to the end, that everybody that was on, on. On this this evening, appreciate you because everybody has worked very hard and diligently to make things happen. And and we all in this together and we're going to work to make it happen. So. And that's pretty much that I have. Dr. Dr. Wool.
So our next meeting. Is on the third of May. There, we'll be having many more conversations about quite a few of the things that we discussed today. I want to thank all of the folks that were here. I think it's really, as much as we now have won the longest meeting award for the committees tonight. This one was full of content that was engaging all the way through. There wasn't. A moment where you go, wow, we really should not have talked about that. And I think that's because of the way people presented and put. And I think that's because of the way people presented and put their professionalism. So I'm really proud to have been part of this. Yeah, I'm the money guy. Um, that's always a challenge. Um, how do you use one-time dollars for ongoing things? We'll address that as we talk priorities and needs. That's part of the process. I just would leave the committee back with what I said before. For everything we're dealing with, there's a ton of challenges, space, grace, respect, and professionalism like we just had tonight. That's what's gonna lead us forward. And while we may not always be able to get to the right decision immediately for everything, the more we keep an open dialogue, keep open trust and respect, the sooner we're gonna be able to move this organization forward and keep our safe, our students safe, create the right climate for our adults and our students moving as well. So we'll be bringing more things through to the regular board. We'll see you back on the third, unless there's anything else, trustees.
That's it.
Um, I think I would agree that that is it, but I, Dr. Wool, you know me, honey. You see my face. You know what I'm saying in the most professional, respectful way. We gotta get them numbers down. Okay, trustee Christian, I am good. I am good. And I'm ready to go make dinner for my family, and I'm gonna go bedazzle me a T-shirt, and you know what it's gonna say, Dr. Wool? Get them numbers down.
Yeah, I know. We'll, we'll, we'll have that.
Everybody have a beautiful evening, and thank you, and take care.
Bye, everyone.
Good night, all.